President Haley, Vice President Hagerman. I'll start that again. President Haley, Vice President Hagerman, Superintendent Horn, Members of the Board. For those watching at home, those in the audience, we are experiencing some technical difficulties today. So things are working, they're working well at the moment. We do have some contingency plans if things go awry. So just prepping everybody that if for any reason it's broadband related, if for any reason we lose the internet, we will take an immediate pause in the meeting because we would lose quorum. And we will set up our contingency plan and then move forward. So again, for those watching at home, those in the room, if you suddenly see us stopping and it's because of the tech issues, but we are good at the moment. So President Haley.
Lots of tech issues today. But we're adaptable. So anyway, thank you all so much for joining us. We are going to call the meeting to order at 9:05 a.m. And I think we'll start with a roll call. So Executive Director Ross.
All right, President Haley.
Here.
Vice President Hagerman.
Here.
Superintendent Horn. Member Kat Neese.
Here.
Dr. Clay.
Here.
Dr. Core.
Here.
Member Kevikis is not with us today. Member Meyerson. Dr. Cruz Rivera.
Here.
President Haley, you have a quorum.
Awesome. Okay. Just we'll start with the President's report. First of all, super excited to chair this meeting. We're going to cover a lot of topics today. Since our last meeting, the NAEP scores came out. So I'm really excited to hear what our team from ADE has to say on our Mauer report and interested to hear how our math presentation is going to play into to help our us reach higher levels of math learning. I know that we have a lot of exciting individuals that are going to be speaking with us today. And I'm looking forward to, as always, our student, our example, our students that are going to present to us. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to you, Sean, our Executive Director Ross, to... Oh, actually. Yeah, I think I'm going to pass it on to you, Superintendent Horn.
Hey.
Again, thanks.
So in the interest of a short meeting, I have no superintendent's report other than to present two awards, two finalists in the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. Each year, the President of the United States recognizes outstanding mathematics and science teachers, bestowing upon them the President Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. These awards demonstrate the value and appreciation the nation has for its teachers. The our two finalists, they're the winners of Arizona, will compete nationally. And if one of them wins nationally, they'll get a $10,000 cash award, a trip to Washington, D.C., and join the Presidential Awardee Network. So our two award winners for elementary science is Nikki Tapia of the Coyote Trail Elementary School in the Marana Unified School District and Eric Jungbluth in the Elementary Mathematics of the Robert J. Roberts Hendrix Elementary School in the Flowing Wells District. So I'll come down to present those awards.
Congratulations.
That's the plaque that says Presidential Award for Excellence in Elementary Science Teaching State finalist Nikki Tapia Coyote Trail Elementary School and Marana Unified School District 2024. Congratulations. And then Eric. Eric, did I pronounce your name correctly?
Yeah, it was pretty good.
Oh, good. I got the idea of Jung from the famous psychologist.
Yeah, yeah.
So Presidential Award for Excellence in Elementary Mathematics Teaching State finalist Eric Jungbluth, J. Robert Hendrix Elementary School in the Flowing Wells School District 2024.
Nice meeting you.
Nice to meet you.
And if you were in the audience taking photos and you want, reach out to Shannon here, she'll share the photo she took with you as well. So just in case.
Fantastic. Well, thank you all so much and congratulations to our educators for being so outstanding. I think now Executive Director Ross, your Executive Director's report, please.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, Members of the Board. This is a wonderful start to a meeting, get to honor some awesome teachers, followed up by honoring some amazing kiddos. So this is everybody's favorite part of the meeting, mine included, where we honor two State Board Students of the Month for February. Up first, we are going to have Eliza McCall, who was a seventh grade student at Marley Park Elementary in Dyssart and was nominated by their teacher, Carly Kay. Carly said that Eliza is an amazing student inside and outside of classroom, active in the community, volunteers for service projects, is an avid researcher, participated in the National Civics B, and wrote an essay that was was recognized and placed 11th in the state, which is amazing, and is hardworking, dedicated, and impacts their school community in a very positive way. So Eliza, come on up.
Hi, my name is Eliza McCall. I am 12 and in seventh grade at Marley Park Elementary School in the Dyssart Unified School District in Surprise. Thank you for recognizing me for this award. I was very surprised and very grateful to be chosen. What I love about my school is that there are so many activities I can participate in. At the moment, I'm in show choir, National Genius Honor Society, and I help in the library before school. I've competed in the National Civics B and I'm a timekeeper for the We the People and Project Citizen programs at the regional and state tournaments. After eighth grade, I plan to go to Shadow Ridge High School for their Education Professions program. Then I plan to go to Arizona State University, also to study education. I have learned so much during these activities along with my schoolwork. NJHS has taught me how to be a leader, choir has taught me teamwork, and the Civics B, We the People, and Project Citizen has taught me more about my country. My career goal is to become a secondary math teacher or a psychologist. The support of all of my teachers and my social worker has helped me grow as a student and as a leader. Unfortunately, my district has cut all social workers from the schools because of budget cuts. Not many kids are without the support they need. I wish the district or the state would consider more funding for social workers. Thank you again, and go Devils.
So before we move on to the next student, I just want to point out to Eliza, who said she wants to be a secondary math teacher. We have the Director of Mathematics and Educational Technology for the state, Ebony McKinney here. We have the Head of Arizona Association of Teachers of Mathematics, Suzie Ko here. We have a lot of math people here who I'm sure would be happy to give you their card and would happen to see you amongst their ranks. So Superintendent Horn, President Haley, Members of the Board. Up next, we have Sampson Harney, who was a fifth grade student at Rice Intermediate School in San Carlos, was nominated by their teacher, and scored highly proficient on A.A. Essay Math in Spring '24, is a recipient of the Principal's Honors Award for A-Grades in E.L.A. in Math, is the President of Student Council, member of the Robotics and Science Fair Club, and all-around great kid. So Sampson, take it away.
I'm 12 years old, I'm proud to be in Apache. I go to Rice Intermediate School, which is located in the eastern part of Arizona, right on the beautiful San Carlos knee community. Before I continue, I would like to thank you all for this opportunity to share a bit about myself. I want to emphasize how much I genuinely love my school. When you step onto our campus, you'll hear the cheerful songs of the birds every day, almost as if they're celebrating our community. Their melodies inspire me and reinforce my inspiration to be like them, making a meaningful impact and continuously growing into a better person for my family and community. I'm super excited to share that I was nominated as Student of the Month. I worked hard to achieve this. I'm President of Student Council and have received Principal's Award for about eight quarters, which means I've been honor student since third grade. I'm really passionate about STEM because I want to be a scientist together with my group. The science research project we are working on is about wind-powered engineering blade designs that generate more voltage. The purpose of this study first is to find the effective ways to harness wind energy and the second is to produce higher electrical output. This research project will be presented at Hillel County Regional Science and Engineering Fair on March 6 in Globe. Likewise, I am an active member of the writing club. I want to write a book about myself so other students will learn something from my experiences. I'm the student I am today because of my amazing support of my teachers, family, and especially my grandma and dad. They always encourage me to put in my best efforts in everything I do. I made a promise to my dad before he passed away that I will be my best self and will never give up, no matter what. I'm so grateful for my wonderful teachers, Mrs. Tollamell, Mrs. Miles, Mrs. Herbert, Mrs. Kenton, and Mr. Vanelis, alongside all the staff at my school who help me succeed every single day. Each day, I strive to do my best. I love Geronimo saying, "While living, I want to live well." And I'll keep that in mind because if I live well, I can make a positive impact in my community. And also, I know that I will be what I want to be when I grow up because with God, all things are possible. I will go to college, finish a degree, I will be a scientist, a writer, and my tribe will be proud of me. Before I end my speech, I would want to share a quote from Philippians 4:13. "I can do all things through Christ which strengthens me."
You can leave that here while we take pictures.
I think as Dr. Core used to say, you really do have the best part of the meeting, Executive Director Ross. And many thanks to Shannon and the rest of the team for helping to identify these incredible students. We've got a future math educator, and then we've got a future scientist who's going to solve wind energy for us. So very exciting. I think we are going to now move to item two, and this is a call to the public. This is a time for the public to comment on items not on today's agenda or on the consent portion of the agenda. All speakers will be limited to two minutes. We have one student speaker who has been granted five minutes. But Executive Director Ross, have we any requests to speak?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, Members of the Board. Up first will be Reagan Hookum, that's a student of whom you spoke, followed by Bridget Vega, and then Leslie Kane.
State Board of Education, I urge you to listen to my story and consider what was not done to protect me. When I was 12 years old, I came forward with several other students to report a teacher who was touching us. I was interviewed and wrote a statement where I told them, "He touches my legs weekly. He does it to everyone," and that he lifted me by my waist onto a desk. My parents were not informed by the school, I had to tell them myself. I was not pulled out of the class and neither was the teacher. No one was put into the classroom to supervise him. Instead, they wrote a letter telling him not to touch the small skinny girls and to just stay behind his desk to teach. It had no effect or follow-up. Five weeks later, more students came forward and reported the same unwanted touching and more. The teacher was allowed to retire with no disciplinary action. My classmates and I continued to be put in a position where we were blamed for the teacher being fired. My family and I had trust in the school when they said they were investigating the situation and to give them time. We later found out that they had not reported it criminally. Instead, they worked to cover up what had happened. I was not offered counseling or any other form of support, even though one of the three administrators that interviewed me previously worked as a counselor. We had to seek help for ourselves where I was diagnosed with PTSD, anxiety, and depression. These administrators had the ability to protect me and go about things the right way, but they did not. Instead, they pushed it off on one another and worked to cover it up. They ignored our cries for help. I am now 16 and can't help but wonder what would be different if I was never put in that situation. My grades slipped and I struggled with day-to-day life. My relationship with friends and family were strained, and I was isolated from my peers. I wonder what my life would be like today if I didn't have to work through those struggles. I wonder what life would be like if I was protected and supported when I first came forward. Would my grades be better? Would I still struggle to make friends? Would I be happier? Would I not struggle with the things I do today? Here we are, four years later, still fighting to be heard. I was 12 years old when I came forward with my classmates. And even after being interviewed several times, I could not be turned away from the truth, and I still can't be. I was advocating for myself when it was the adults around me whose job to do so. I hope that when you are deciding disciplinary action, you are aware of the lasting effects this has had on me, and I hope you are willing to prevent it from happening time and time again to other children. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, Members of the Board. Up next, we have Bridget Vega, followed by Leslie Kane, and then Haricia Arnold.
Good morning. I stand here today to be a voice for the voiceless, as a concerned mother and a community advocate. Leadership top-down plays a crucial role in setting the tone for how a district operates. We must confront the uncomfortable truths within our communities. We cannot turn a blind eye. We have seen the firsthand trauma and devastation that has plagued the students within our schools. This has been going on for eight to 10 years. CUSD has failed to hold individuals accountable for the trauma inflicted on students. This particular administration has been discounting, minimalizing, and invalidating the students about predations and sexual abuse. Do we not recall the children at Hamilton High School? They were raped, hazed, and sodomized in the locker room, and yet, no accountability. Now at BASHA, we have a luring of a minor for sexual exploitation, grooming, harassment, and violations seem to not only be a culture problem, but a systematic issue. It's time for the State Board of Education to investigate the lack of training on mandated reporting and grooming, as well as the failure to implement protective policies in protecting our children. Thank you guys for your time.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, Members of the Board. Up next, we have Leslie Kane, followed by Haricia Arnold, and then Katie McPherson.
Good morning. At the end of March, you'll be making critical decisions about disciplinary action for five CUSD administrators. And you may hear from union reps claiming that the P-PAC process was biased and unfair. You may also hear emotional appeals on behalf of those administrators. Let's be clear, this is about negligence. CUSD has a pattern of sweeping serious teacher misconduct under the rug, intimidating those who speak up, and giving students and families the runaround when they report abuse. They prioritize image, paychecks, and power over the well-being of the community they're supposed to serve. That's why this issue made it all the way to the P-PAC in the first place. District leadership failed to do the right thing when it mattered most. No one should be fooled by the attempts to minimize these failures. The students and families impacted by teacher misconduct deserve real accountability, not victim blaming, shaming, or other forms of re-traumatization. Toxic stress from these types of adverse experiences can compromise children's health and well-being for the remainder of their school years into adulthood, and that's according to the CDC. Trauma-informed training for all staff from the top down would help tremendously, and I have resources to share if you'd like. Your decisions at the end of March sends a message to students, families, and educators in this entire state. Will you do what's right, or will you allow the trauma-reinforcing culture of fear, favoritism, and cover-ups to continue? Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, Members of the Board. Up next, we have Haricia Arnold, followed by Katie McPherson, and then Brandy Blackford. Is Ms. Arnold with us? I might be mispronouncing your first name. I apologize if I am. Melissa, who do we have with us?
Katie McPherson is online, and we also have Brandy Blackford online and Lee Juan, I think is the next one. Those are the only three participants we have online.
Okay. So we'll go to Katie McPherson, followed by Brandy Blackford, and then Lee Wan Lee. Ms. McPherson? Ms. McPherson, are you with us?
Hello?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. Good morning, esteemed members of the State Board of Education and President. I am a youth mental health advocate and I'm also a parent at Castillo High School as well as BASHA High School. I am calling in today to ask you to look at FATHS Law, which is a law in Illinois that would upgrade the act of grooming into the public school code. It also allows for better vetting and hiring of teachers. When you look at the stats through the Department of Education, 1 in 10 students are groomed or sexually abused at school by school staff. When we look at who else is abusing our children, we look at the stats of 59% of children that are sexually abused are abused by someone that they know, a teacher, a coach, an administrator, a pastor, a camp counselor, someone in a position of trust. The other 34% is a family member, and 7% are strangers. And this is not just something that happens to girls, it also happens to boys. Children that are groomed, sexually abused, harassed, or violated are also three to four more times as likely to have things like anxiety, PTSD, and to attempt suicide. And so as a parent in the Chandler Unified School District community, who not only was unfortunately a part of what Reagan Hookum spoke about today, but having a student in that class and having a student that's currently in another class where this is going on, I'm just asking you to look at FATHS Law. I really think that's a direction we can head, and I feel like you have the power to perhaps add that to our school code. Thank you so much to the P-PAC Committee for their fidelity and grace to this process as well. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, Members of the Board. Up next, we have Brandy Blackford, followed by Lee Han Lee.
Good morning, Members of the Board. My name is Brandy Blackford, and I'm here today as an ESA parent to discuss a few key issues that are impacting all of the families using the program. First, I would like to request universal debit card access. This tool will streamline the purchasing process and ensure that all families, regardless of how they choose to educate, have the same convenience. Restricting access creates unnecessary burdens and inequities in the program. And I am aware that there is a current bill going through the legislative process, but I would like to strongly encourage everyone present to pay attention to that bill and encourage you to support it. Second, transparency and risk-based auditing. We've been told that the program has moved to risk-based auditing, but we have not been given any parameters that may be used to flag those transactions. I'm asking that these guidelines be made public so that parents can make informed decisions and avoid delays caused by unclear criteria. Transparency will foster accountability for all of us without creating any unnecessary obstacles. And finally, there is a known glitch that is preventing the submission of the required PDFs across all of the browsers. And I know that this may be a class wallet issue, but as the account holder, the Department of Education and ESA can put the pressure on class wallet to fix this. And until it is fixed, parents are left without a way to provide the necessary documentation, which is delaying approvals and creating unnecessary frustration. Addressing these issues will improve efficiency and ensure ESA funds are used as intended. ESA is an incredible resource for Arizona families, but small improvements like these will make it even more effective. Thank you for your time and for your commitment to supporting educational freedom in our state.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, Members of the Board. Up next is Lee Han Lee, and then Melissa, has Haricia Arnold joined us? Okay, so...
Hello.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm here to talk about my appeal for the music instrument purchase reimbursement. The music instrument purchase is a Rambol education items in the ESA Parents Handbook. I think when we before made the music instrument, we sent emails asking the ESA department about the music instrument purchase and asked them about, is there any music instrument monetary cap? I was never communicated by them if we can buy how much the instrument that we can buy. And then we followed the music instrument professors to advise to purchase a instrument for my ESA kits. I think that is a good quality one. We followed all the steps about how to submit the curriculum, invoice, and everything. But then we wait for about four months, then we got a rejection, say there was the instrument you can buy cannot be over $4,000. This was never communicated with us and with ESA parents in calls, in emails. And this seems like a secret rule that which is covered on the table. We don't know it. And then we appealed it, and then later we found there's some other ESA parents, they say they bought a music instrument, which is... THEY BOUGHT A MUSIC INSTRUMENT WHICH IS ABOUT $4,800, $800, WHICH WAS APPROVED BY ESA DEPARTMENT. SO WE WANT TO KNOW WHAT IS THE SECRET RULE IN ESA HANDBOOK FOR THE $4,000? WE WANT TO TRY OUR BEST COMMUNICATION WITH THE ESA DEPARTMENT AND ARIZONA DEPARTMENT OF EDUCATION. I HOPE SO FAR I STILL DIDN'T GET ANY MONEY reimbursed, EVEN LIKE $4,000. SO I WANT TO GET A REASONABLE RESOLUTION. THANK YOU VERY MUCH.
PRESIDENT HAYLEY, SUPERINTENDENT HORN, MEMBERS OF THE BOARD. THAT CONCLUDES THIS CALL TO THE PUBLIC.
THANK YOU SO MUCH, EXECUTIVE DIRECTOR ROSS. OK, WE WILL NOW MOVE TO ITEM THREE, WHICH IS THE CONSENT AGENDA. IS THERE AN ITEM OR ITEMS FROM THE CONSENT AGENDA THAT A BOARD MEMBER WOULD LIKE TO PULL AND DISCUSS? SEEING THAT THERE ARE NONE, DO I HAVE A MOTION TO APPROVE ITEMS THREE A THROUGH THREE H? MEMBER MYERSON AND THEN MEMBER CLAY WILL SECOND. SO ALL IN FAVOR SAY Aye.
Aye.
ANY OPPOSED? THE Ayes HAVE IT. THANK YOU. AND THEN JUST AS I FORGOT TO REMIND US EARLIER, FOR THOSE THAT ARE JOINING US VIRTUALLY, WE'LL JUST NEED YOU TO HAVE YOU ON SCREEN, PARTICULARLY DURING THE VOTE. SO THANK YOU SO MUCH. WE ARE NOW GOING TO MOVE ON TO ITEM FOUR, WHICH IS ANOTHER CALL TO THE PUBLIC. THIS TIME, THIS IS FOR THE PUBLIC TO COMMENT ON ITEMS ON TODAY'S GENERAL SESSION. ALL SPEAKERS WILL BE LIMITED TO TWO MINUTES. EXECUTIVE DIRECTOR ROSS, HAVE WE RECEIVED ANY REQUESTS TO SPEAK?
PRESIDENT HAYLEY, SUPERINTENDENT HORN, MEMBERS OF THE BOARD. UP FIRST WE HAVE JANICE PALMER, FOLLOWED BY FABIO MILNER, AND THEN TED CO.
THANK YOU, SEAN. THANK YOU, MADAM PRESIDENT, SUPERINTENDENT HORN, MEMBERS OF THE BOARD. MY NAME IS JANICE PALMER WITH HELIOS EDUCATION FOUNDATION, AND I'M HERE TO SPEAK ON ITEM NUMBER FIVE B. FIRST OF ALL, I WANT TO THANK YOUR STAFF, SUPERINTENDENT HORN, DEPUTY ASSOCIATE SUPERINTENDENT LINDA BURROWS WAS FANTASTIC. WHEN I HAD A QUESTION ABOUT THE MATH ITEM, SHE IMMEDIATELY FIGURED OUT A TIME TO HAVE A DISCUSSION ABOUT THAT, WHICH VERY APPRECIATE, BECAUSE IT HELPS INFORM KIND OF THE CONVERSATION TODAY. UNDERSTAND THAT THE INTENT OF OPENING THE MATH STANDARD, SPECIFICALLY ALGEBRA II, IS REALLY, IN A WAY, TO HEAR THAT THIS IS GOING TO BE A 12 TO 18-MONTH PROCESS ONCE THIS RULE OPENS, AND I THINK THIS WILL ALLOW TIME FOR MORE STAKEHOLDER INPUT THAT WAS NOT INCLUDED IN THE PROPOSAL THAT YOU'LL SEE BEFORE YOU, AND I WOULD APPRECIATE IF HELIOS COULD BE INCLUDED IN THOSE CONVERSATIONS. IN THE MEANTIME, I OFFER THREE AREAS OF CAUTION. ONE, DON'T LOWER STANDARDS. THERE SEEMS TO BE A TREN Nationwide THAT RATHER THAN RISING TO THE OCCASION WITH THE DOWNWARD TREND IN READING AND MATH SCORES AND DOING EVERYTHING NEEDED TO HELP THOSE STUDENTS, WE START LOOKING AT THE STANDARDS BEING LOWERED. WE CAN'T ALLOW THAT TO HAPPEN WITH THE OPENING OF THESE STANDARDS. NUMBER TWO, ENSURE RIGOR AND RELEVANCE DOES NOT COME AT THE EXPENSE OF TRACKING. MY UNDERSTANDING IS THAT THE AIM OF OPENING UP THE STANDARDS IS TO BETTER ALIGN ALGEBRA II COURSE-TAKING TO THE STANDARDS IN COLLEGE AND THEN SPECIFICALLY FOR STEM RELATED FIELD AS WELL AS FOR CTE AND FOR LIBERAL ARTS. THIS CAN MAKE SENSE AS LONG AS THEY ARE REGAROUS AND BOTH PROVIDE THE STUDENTS THE SKILLS NECESSARY IF THEY CHANGE THEIR MIND LATER ON. IT CAN'T RESULT IN TRACKING. AND NUMBER THREE, DON'T LET POLICY GET HEAD OF THE RESEARCH. HELIOS IS WORKING WITH FOUR SCHOOL DISTRICTS TO LOOK AT MATH COURSE OFFERINGS AND HOW THOSE PASS MATRICULATE. THE ASU HELIOS DECISION CENTER SPOKE TO YOU PROBABLY A FEW MONTHS AGO ABOUT THE VISTA MODEL THAT'S LOOKING AT SCHOOL COURSE-TAKING, INCLUDING MATH, AND HOW THOSE MATRICULATE TO HIGH SCHOOL. LASTLY, WE HAVE A GREAT PARTNERSHIP WITH NORTHERN ARIZONA UNIVERSITY WHERE WE'RE EVALUATING THEIR PILOT OF ADMITTING STUDENTS WITH THE 14 CREDIT HOURS TO LESS THAN WHAT ABORE REQUIRES INTO UNIVERSITIES. WE HAVE JUST RECEIVED THE RAW DATA OF THE FIRST YEAR OF THAT PILOT PROGRAM AND CONTINUING TO CRUNCH THE NUMBERS, AND WE LOOK FORWARD TO SEE WHAT THOSE RESULTS ARE WILL BE. SO WE LOOK FORWARD TO YOUR CONTINUED PARTNERSHIP AND HELPING STUDENTS REACH THEIR FULL POTENTIAL AND APPRECIATE THE OPPORTUNITY TO ADDRESS YOU THIS MORNING. THANK YOU.
PRESIDENT HAYLEY, SUPERINTENDENT HORN, MEMBERS OF THE BOARD. UP NEXT WE HAVE TED CO, FOLLOWED BY SUSI MAST, AND THEN Chad Wilson.
PRESIDENT HAYLEY, MEMBERS OF THE BOARD. I'M ALSO SPEAKING OUT ABOUT ITEM FIVE B. I'M A LIFELONG ARIZONAN, A PARENT OF FIVE KIDS WHO WENT THROUGH THE PUBLIC SCHOOL SYSTEM. I WAS A HIGH SCHOOL MATHEMATICS TEACHER, I'VE BEEN A COMMUNITY COLLEGE MATHEMATICS CHAIR AND PROFESSOR AT TWO DIFFERENT COMMUNITY COLLEGES AND ADMINISTRATOR AT GRAND CANYON UNIVERSITY. AND SO NOW I'VE HAD THE CHANCE TO SPEND THE LAST FEW YEARS WORKING WITH STATES AND ORGANIZATIONS AS THEY TACKLE THIS QUESTION ABOUT HOW DO WE BETTER ALIGN WHAT'S HAPPENING IN COLLEGE AND UNIVERSITY WITH WHAT'S HAPPENING IN THE HIGH SCHOOLS? AND SO IT'S WITH THIS, YOU KNOW, THIS NOTION OF COLLEGE READINESS IS ALWAYS A FANTASTIC DRIVING IDEA, BUT THE DEFINITION IS CHANGING ON THE COLLEGE SIDE FASTER THAN IT'S CHANGING ON THE HIGH SCHOOL SIDE. FOR A LONG TIME, WE HAD A COURSE CALLED COLLEGE ALGEBRA THAT WAS SORT OF EXPECTED FOR ALL FOLKS TO TAKE, BUT THAT'S NOT THE CASE ANY LONGER. AND EVEN IN OTHER STATES NOW, WE HAVE NOT JUST LIKE A COLLEGE MATHEMATICS TYPED COURSE, BUT SOME EVEN OFFER LIKE A STATISTICS PATHWAY AND THIS SORT OF THING THAT DO NOT REQUIRE THAT SAME LEVEL OF ALGEBRA TO ENTER AND SUCCEED. IN FACT, WE HAVE THIS INTERESTING JUXTOPOSITION IN ARIZONA RIGHT NOW WHERE FOR MANY, IF NOT MOST, OF OUR PROGRAMS IN HIGHER ED, WE REQUIRE FAR MORE OF OUR STUDENTS ALGEBRAICALLY SPEAKING TO GRADUATE FROM HIGH SCHOOL THAN WE EVER WELL EXPECT OF THEM TO GET THROUGH THEIR COLLEGE PROGRAM. THERE'S MORE ALGEBRA BAKED IN THERE THAN WE NEED RIGHT NOW. NOW, THERE ARE A LOT OF CAUTIONS IN THIS WORK, ABSOLUTELY, AND THAT'S WHY WE HAVE TO DO THIS DUE DILIGENCE TO MAKE SURE THAT WE'RE DOING THE RIGHT KIND OF ALIGNMENT, TO MAKE SURE THAT THE DOORS ARE KEPT OPEN, THE TRACKING DOESN'T HAPPEN, AND THAT STANDARDS ARE NOT LOWERED. SO I SUPPORT REVISING OUR STANDARDS TO BETTER ALIGN WITH ACTUAL STUDENT NEEDS AND ALSO TO REDUCE OVERLAP WITH NEW COURSES THAT HAVE COME ONBOARD LIKE AP PRECALCULUS, WHICH ARE PROVIDING A NEW SORT OF LINE, IF YOU WILL, ALONG WITH IT. SO IT'S TIME FOR US TO ASK THIS QUESTION. WHAT'S THE MATH THAT ALL STUDENTS NEED BEFORE ACTUALLY DIGGING INTO THIS HIGHLY SPECIALIZED MATH THAT ONLY SOME STUDENTS NEED? ARE THERE OTHER THINGS THAT WE SHOULD BE PRESENTING TO THEM LIKE STATISTICS OR DATA LITERACY OR DATA SCIENCE OR PROBLEM LIKE OTHER THINGS THAT WE COULD PUT MORE TIME IN THAN WE ARE RIGHT NOW? AND I THINK THE ANSWER IS YES, AND IT'S TIME FOR US TO FIGURE THOSE THINGS OUT FROM AN ARIZONA PERSPECTIVE. THANK YOU VERY MUCH.
PRESIDENT HAYLEY, SUPERINTENDENT HORN, MEMBERS OF THE BOARD. UP NEXT IS SUSI MAST, FOLLOWED BY CHAD WILSON, AND THEN ROBERT WEER.
PRESIDENT HAYLEY, SUPERINTENDENT HORN, MEMBERS OF THE BOARD. HAPPY MONDAY, AND GOOD MORNING. MY NAME IS SUSI MAST, AND I'M A PROUD ARIZONA CERTIFIED TEACHER AND ADMINISTRATOR WITH OVER 30 YEARS OF EXPERIENCE, AND IT'S AN HONOR TODAY TO PRESENT BEFORE YOU AS A REPRESENTATIVE OF THE ARIZONA ASSOCIATION OF TEACHERS OF MATHEMATICS, THE ARIZONA MATH LEADERS, AND ALSO THE ARIZONA MATHEMATICS COLLABORATIVE. THAT'S A LOT. WE KNOW FROM HEARING FROM ALGEBRA II TEACHERS SINCE MINIMUM 2015 THAT THE BREATH OF THE STANDARDS DOES NOT ALLOW FOR DEPTH OF UNDERSTANDING. THE ARIZONA MATHEMATICS COLLABORATIVE, WHICH IS KIND OF MORE LIKE A THINK TANK, HAS BEEN REALLY BRAINSTORMING THIS FOR OVER TWO YEARS, AND TED ALLUDED TO THAT WHEN HE SAID, WHAT IS THE MATH THAT ALL STUDENTS NEED IN HIGH SCHOOL? THESE DISCUSSIONS AND FEEDBACK FROM HIGH SCHOOL MATHEMATICS LEADERS AND TEACHERS LEAD US TO SUPPORT THE OPENING OF THE REVISION PROCESS OF THE ALGEBRA II MATHEMATICS STANDARDS. IT'S NOT A NEW PROBLEM. I HAVE BEEN LITERALLY INVOLVED IN STANDARDS REVISIONS SINCE 2003, 2008, 2010, 2015, WITH SOME PEOPLE UP HERE THAT WERE INVOLVED IN THAT. AND THE GREATEST THING ABOUT ARIZONA IS WE HAVE ALWAYS INCLUDED ARIZONA EDUCATORS, MATHEMATICIANS, PRE-SERVICE, HIGHER ED, AND OUR THINK TANKS THAT WE WORK WITH HERE IN THIS STATE. SO THE PROCESS IS ALWAYS AMAZING. WE ALWAYS COME UP WITH GREAT STANDARDS. IT'S JUST TIME TO RETHINK ALGEBRA II RIGHT NOW. WHEN WE THINK ABOUT THE MATH THAT ALL STUDENTS NEED IN HIGH SCHOOL, WE WANT TO ASSURE THAT ALL STUDENTS INCLUDES NOT ONLY STEM, BUT PATHWAYS THAT INCLUDE CTE, STUDENTS WHO WANT TO GO THROUGH A LIBERAL ARTS TRACK, AND POSSIBLE TRADE PROGRAMS. WE WANT TO HIT ALL STUDENTS WITH THE MATH THAT ALL NEED IN HIGH SCHOOL, AND LIKE TED MENTIONED, WITH THE AP PRECALCULUS STANDARDS, WE ACTUALLY HAVE A DEFINITIVE CUT THAT WE CAN MAKE. SO THANK YOU VERY MUCH, AND WE HOPE THAT WE CAN GO FORWARD WITH ACTION. THANK YOU SO MUCH.
PRESIDENT HAYLEY, SUPERINTENDENT HORN, MEMBERS OF THE BOARD. UP NEXT WE HAVE VIRTUAL SPEAKERS. Melissa's Chad Wilson WITH US. SO CHAD WILSON, FOLLOWED BY ROBERT WEER, AND THEN JAMEY FITZPATRICK.
SUPERINTENDENT HORN, CAN YOU HEAR ME?
WE CAN.
HI, SUPERINTENDENT HORN, MEMBERS OF THE GOVERNING BOARD. THANK YOU FOR GIVING ME THE OPPORTUNITY TO SPEAK TODAY IN THE SUPPORT OF THE CURRENT PROPOSAL OF THE PERkins PLAN FOR CTE. IT'S MY UNDERSTANDING THAT THE PLAN IS BEING VOTED ON TODAY WITH THE SPLIT RECOMMENDATION OF 82% TO THE CTEDS, 18% TO THE COMMUNITY COLLEGES. I UNDERSTAND THAT THIS HAS BEEN A CONTENTIOUS DISCUSSION, AND THE ADE WAS ASKED TO GO BACK TO OUR CONSTITUENTS AND SEEK MORE INFORMATION TO MAKE SURE THAT THE RECOMMENDATION AS PRESENTED IS ONE THAT'S SUPPORTED BY OUR CONSTITUENTS, AND IT'S MY UNDERSTANDING THAT OVERWHELMINGLY THE SPLIT OF 82 TO 18 IS THE RECOMMENDATION. AS A CTE SUPERINTENDENT, THOUGH, I CAN TELL YOU THAT A SPLIT DIFFERENT THAN THAT HAS A NEGATIVE IMPACT ON NOT ONLY EBIT AS A CENTRAL CAMPUS, BUT EBIT WHICH SERVICES THE ENTIRE EAST VALLEY. CURRENTLY, THE SPLIT ALLOWS US TO DO THE WORK THAT WE KNOW IS GOING TO HELP BUILD WORKFORCE DEVELOPMENT. TAKING DOLLARS AWAY FROM THE CTEDS LESSONS THAT OPPORTUNITY. MORE CONCERNING TO ME, THOUGH, OR EQUALLY CONCERNING, IS THE DIFFERENT REVENUE STREAMS THAT CTEDS OR DISTRICTS HAVE THAT OR DON'T HAVE THAT COMMUNITY COLLEGES DO HAVE. IT'S MY UNDERSTANDING THAT COMMUNITY COLLEGES HAVE SIGNIFICANTLY MORE REVENUE STREAM AND OPPORTUNITY TO GENERATE REVENUE TO SUPPORT WORKFORCE DEVELOPMENT THAN CTE OR CTEDS DO. LAST, AND PROBABLY THE BIGGEST BONE OF CONTENTION FOR ME, IS THAT DOLLARS THAT ARE TAKEN AWAY FROM CTEDS, LIKE EBIT CENTRAL CAMPUS, WILL HAVE A NEGATIVE IMPACT FOR SURE, BUT THE BIGGEST IMPACT WILL COME IN OUR SMALL, MORE RURAL DISTRICTS. AND WE KNOW THAT THOSE ARE JUST AS IMPORTANT TO US AS THE DISTRICTS THAT RESIDE IN MARICOPA COUNTY OR Pima COUNTY. AND SO TAKING AWAY PERkins DOLLARS AT A RATE THAT'S GREATER THAN WHAT'S PRESENTED IN THE PLAN TODAY IS A DISSERVICE TO NOT ONLY CTEDS, BUT TO STUDENTS IN SMALLER RURAL COMMUNITIES THAT DESPERATELY NEED THOSE DOLLARS, DOLLARS THAT THEY CAN'T CAPTURE IN WAYS THAT COMMUNITY COLLEGES CAN. SO I ENCOURAGE YOU, PLEASE, TO VOTE YES AS PRESENTED ON THE PLAN AS PRESENTED TODAY.
PRESIDENT HAYLEY, SUPERINTENDENT HORN, MEMBERS OF THE BOARD. UP NEXT WE HAVE ROBERT WEER, FOLLOWED BY JAMEY FITZPATRICK.
HELLO, THIS IS ROBERT WEER. THANK YOU FOR ALLOWING ME TO SPEAK TODAY ON BEHALF OF THIS. VERY SIMILAR TO WHAT Chad HAD TALKED ABOUT. I'VE BEEN IN CAREER TECH FOR OVER 33 YEARS. AS A CTE DIRECTOR, CTE TEACHER, AND THE PERkins FUND HAS ALWAYS BEEN VERY STRONG AND VERY USEFUL FOR HIGH SCHOOLS. WE USE IT FOR A LOT OF OUR CAPITAL ITEMS, SUPPLY, PROFESSIONAL DEVELOPMENT, AND KEEPING THE PERCENT AT THE 82-18 IS HIGHLY RECOMMENDED BY MYSELF. I'M A SUPERINTENDENT OF VALLEY ACADEMY FOR CAREER AND TECHNOLOGY EDUCATION. AND I HAVE THREE SATELLITE DISTRICTS, MINGUS UNION HIGH SCHOOL, CAMP VERDI HIGH SCHOOL, AND SEDONA OAK CREEK. AND THEY USE THAT MONEY VERY VALUABLE AND USE EVERY BIT OF IT IN ORDER TO TRY TO PAY FOR THEIR THINGS WITH LIMITED BUDGET AND IN ONE OF OUR SCHOOLS DECLINING ENROLLMENT. SO WE'RE JUST ASKING THAT YOU LOOK OVER THAT. I DO AGREE WITH ALL THE GOALS AND THE MEASUREMENTS. I BELIEVE THAT IS ATTAINABLE AND IS ALSO A GOOD BENCHMARK FOR US ALL TO BE WORKING FOR. THANK YOU.
PRESIDENT HAYLEY, SUPERINTENDENT HORN, MEMBERS OF THE BOARD. OUR FINAL SPEAKER FOR THIS CALL TO THE PUBLIC IS JAMEY FITZPATRICK.
GOOD MORNING, SUPERINTENDENT HORN, PRESIDENT HAYLEY, AND MEMBERS OF THE ARIZONA STATE BOARD OF EDUCATION. THANK YOU FOR THE OPPORTUNITY TO SPEAK TODAY. I'M JAMEY FITZPATRICK, CTE LOCAL DIRECTOR FOR THE DEAR VALLEY UNIFIED SCHOOL DISTRICT IN NORTH PHOENIX. AND HERE TODAY TO ADVOCATE FOR THE CONTINUED MAINTENANCE OF THE CURRENT PERkins VIVE SPLIT, ALLOCATING 82% TO SECONDARY EDUCATION AND 18% TO POST-SECONDARY. IT IS CRUCIAL FOR THE LONG-TERM ECONOMIC HEALTH AND WORKFORCE DEVELOPMENT OF ARIZONA FOR SEVERAL REASONS. WHAT IS THE FOUNDATIONAL SKILLS DEVELOPMENT? SECONDARY ED IS WHERE STUDENTS FIRST ENCOUNTER AND DEVELOP THOSE FOUNDATIONAL SKILLS NECESSARY FOR SUCCESSFUL CAREERS IN HIGH-WAGE, HIGH-Demand FIELD. THIS EARLY EXPOSURE IS ESSENTIAL FOR BUILDING A SKILLED WORKFORCE PIPELINE IN OUR STATE. NUMBER TWO, SUPER IMPORTANT, IS ADDRESSING THE IMMEDIATE WORKFORCE NEEDS. ARIZONA FACES CRITICAL WORKFORCE SHORTAGES IN SECTORS, INCLUDING MANUFACTURING, CONSTRUCTION, AND HEALTHCARE. SECONDARY CTE PROGRAMS CAN DIRECTLY ADDRESS THESE NEEDS BY PROVIDING STUDENTS WITH THE SPECIFIC SKILLS EMPLOYERS ARE SEEKING. BY INVESTIGATING, INVESTING IN THESE PROGRAMS AT THE SECONDARY LEVEL, WE ENSURE A STEADY STREAM OF QUALIFIED GRADUATES WITH PROFESSIONAL SKILLS READY TO CONTRIBUTE TO ARIZONA'S ECONOMY IMMEDIATELY UPON HIGH SCHOOL GRADUATION. HERE IN DEAR VALLEY, OUR CERTIFIED NURSING ASSISTANT PROGRAM IS ONE OF THE STRONGEST HIGH SCHOOL PROGRAMS AND SERVES AS A TESTAMENT TO THIS. EQUIitable ACCESS AND OPPORTUNITY FOR OUR MOST VULNERABLE AND SPECIAL POPULATIONS, THIS 82% ALLOCATION ALLOWS FOR BROADER ACCESS TO CTE PROGRAMS FOR DIVERSE STUDENT POPULATIONS, SPECIFICALLY IN RURAL AND UNDER SERVED AREAS, DEVELOPING THESE VALUABLE SKILLS REGARDLESS OF THEIR BACKGROUND OR LOCATION. DISPROPORTIONATE ALLOCATION OF THOSE FUNDS WOULD DEFINITELY Hinder THIS. AN EXAMPLE FROM MY OWN DISTRICT IS OUR CONSTRUCTION TRADE PROGRAM AT BERRY GOLDWATER HIGH SCHOOL, A TITLE ONE SCHOOL, WHERE STUDENTS ARE GAINING WORKBASED LEARNING EXPERIENCES MAKING THEM EMPLOYABLE ON DAY ONE. AND ALSO BUILDING ON THOSE PATHWAYS NECESSARY FOR SECONDARY FOUNDATIONS. WE'VE HAD RECOGNITION BY HELIOS FOR ENGINEERING, SOFTWARE AND APP, WHERE STUDENTS ARE SUCCESSFUL AT THE SECONDARY LEVEL. THEY URGE YOU TO CONTINUE THE SPLIT AT 82-18, SECONDARY AND POST-SECONDARY. THANK YOU FOR SUPPORT, AND THANK YOU FOR YOUR TIME.
PRESIDENT HAYLEY, SUPERINTENDENT HORN, MEMBERS OF THE BOARD. THAT CONCLUDES THIS CALL TO THE PUBLIC.
FANTASTIC. THANK YOU SO MUCH, EXECUTIVE DIRECTOR ROSS. WE ARE NOW GOING TO MOVE TO ITEM FIVE. THIS IS THE GENERAL SESSION, AND WE WILL START WITH ITEM FIVE A. EXECUTIVE DIRECTOR ROSS.
PRESIDENT HAYLEY, SUPERINTENDENT HORN, MEMBERS OF THE BOARD. WITH US TODAY ARE DR. PAUL PERALT FROM HELIOS, AND DR. LYNAY DUNN FROM WESTED. THEY WILL BE PRESENTING THEIR FINDINGS FROM A RECENTLY COMPLETED STUDY ON CHRONIC ABSENTEEISM.
GOOD MORNING, PRESIDENT HAYLEY, SUPERINTENDENT HORN, DISTINCT MEMBERS OF THE BOARD OF EDUCATION. WE'RE EXCITED TO BE HERE TODAY TO GET TO PRESENT TO YOU ON SOME WORK THAT WE'VE BEEN DOING FOR THE LAST FIVE YEARS AROUND CHRONIC ABSENTEEISM. AS WE START THIS CONVERSATION, I'D BE REMISS IF I DIDN'T SAY THANK YOU TO SUPERINTENDENT HORN AND HIS TEAM. THAT'S REALLY BEEN HELPFUL TO US TO COLLECT THE DATA TO ACTUALLY TAKE A LOOK AT THIS WORK. WHEN WE'RE LOOKING AT THIS, WHAT WE WANT TO SHARE IS KIND OF TALK ABOUT WHAT'S HAPPENED OVER THE LAST FIVE YEARS PRIOR TO THE PANDEMIC, LEADING INTO THE PANDEMIC AND COMING OUT. THIS WORK REALLY STARTED WITH THE RELEASE OF A REPORT IN 2022. IN 2022, WE RELEASED OUR FIRST INITIAL REPORT THAT REALLY HIGHLIGHTED WHAT WAS HAPPENING THE THREE YEARS PRIOR TO THE PANDEMIC AND DURING THAT FIRST YEAR AND A HALF OF THE PANDEMIC. AND WHAT WE SAW IS THAT WE HAD REALLY HIGH RATES OF CHRONIC ABSENTEEISM DEVELOP ONCE THE PANDEMIC STARTED. SORRY, I DON'T. OH, THAT'S OK. I DON'T KNOW IF I SHOULD STOP OR SO YOU COULD SEE THE SLIDES OR CONTINUE TO TALK? YOU GUYS TELL ME. OK, YOU CAN GO TO THE SECOND SLIDE. SO, YOU KNOW, WHEN WE THINK ABOUT THIS, YOU KNOW, THINKING ABOUT THE PANDEMIC, YOU KNOW, ONE OF THE THINGS THAT WE CAN REALLY SAY IS THAT NEARLY ONE OF THREE ARIZONA STUDENTS ARE CHRONICALLY ABSENCE WHEN WE'RE LOOKING AT THE DATA FOR 2022 AND 23. NOW, THAT NUMBER IS REALLY COMING DOWN. IT STARTED AT 34% IN 21, 22, BUT THOSE NUMBERS HAVE REALLY INCREASED OVER TIME. AND WHAT I WANTED TO KIND OF START WITH IS GIVING THE GENERAL DEFINITION OF CHRONIC ABSENTEEISM. SO CHRONICALLY ABSENCE IN THE STATE OF ARIZONA MEANS THAT YOU'RE MISSING 10% OR MORE OF THE SCHOOL DAY WHEN, OR 10% OR MORE OF THE CLASSES OVER THE SCHOOL YEAR. SO THAT USUALLY TRANSMITS TO ABOUT 18 DAYS PER YEAR WITHIN YOUR DISTRICT OR SCHOOL. NOW, THE CHALLENGE IS, IS THAT ONLY INCLUDES IF YOU'RE WITHIN YOUR DISTRICT AND SCHOOL. SO FOR EXAMPLE, I'LL GIVE THIS EXAMPLE. IF YOU WERE, STARTED IN FINIC UNION, AND YOU MISSED 10 OR 11 DAYS, AND THEN YOU MOVED TO YUMA, AND YOU MISSED ANOTHER NINE DAYS, YOU WOULD TECHNICALLY NOT BE IDENTIFIED AS CHRONICALLY ABSENCE BECAUSE IT DIDN'T ALL HAPPEN WITHIN ONE DISTRICT. AND SO THAT'S WHY WE'RE NUMBER ONE. WE'RE LOOKING AT HOW CHRONIC ABSENTEEISM IS DEFINED IN ARIZONA, AND YOU SEE THE BLUE LINE IS THE CURRENT DEFINITION THERE, AND THE DOTTED LINE GIVES US AN IDEA OF WHAT'S HAPPENING WHEN WE ADD THOSE OTHER, THE OTHER DEFINITION IN OF SHOWING CHRONIC ABSENTEEISM ACROSS TIME. NEXT SLIDE, PLEASE. NEXT SLIDE, SORRY. SO I REALLY WANTED TO MAKE SURE THAT I HIGHLIGHTED, YOU KNOW, THE STATE BOARD OF EDUCATION ADOPTED THE K-12 LITERACY SUBCOMMITTEE RECOMMENDATIONS AT LAST DECEMBER'S BOARD MEETING THAT INCLUDE THE RECOMMENDATIONS OF THE CHRONIC ABSENTEEISM TASK FORCE. AND SO ON THAT K-3 SUBCOMMITTEE INCLUDED PRESIDENT HAYLEY AND MEMBER MYERSON, AND ON THE CHRONIC ABSENTEEISM TASK FORCE, I'D LIKE TO CALL OUT MEMBER MYERSON, I'M SORRY, MEMBER HAGGERMAN, AND ALSO OUR EXECUTIVE VECTOR SEAN ROSS. SO WHEN WE LOOK AT THOSE RELATED TASK FORCE RECOMMENDATIONS, YOU KNOW, TWO OF THE THINGS THAT WE'RE GOING TO BE CONNECTING WITH OUR DATA TODAY IS NUMBER ONE, COLLECTING ACTUABLE DATA TO IDENTIFY CHALLENGES AND DRIVE SOLUTIONS. AND THAT'S ONE OF THE THINGS THAT WE'RE DOING TODAY. WHAT CAN WE DO AND WHAT CAN WE discern FROM THAT DATA? AND THEN NUMBER TWO, REVISIT THE CHRONIC ABSENTEEISM DEFINITION. AND SO ARIZONA'S DEFINITION OF CHRONIC ABSENTEEISM DOESN'T ACCOUNT FOR THAT MOBILITY. NOW, ONE THING I WILL HIGHLIGHT IS THAT ORIGINALLY WE HAD HEARD THAT, OR WE HAD THOUGHT THAT CHANGES TO THAT DEFINITION WOULD HAVE TO BE MADE LEGISLATIVELY, BUT WE FOUND OUT THAT THAT But we found out that those changes can happen through the Department of Education and Read On, our partners are working to make sure those things can start happening and we can move to a better way to collect chronic absenteeism data. Next slide. One thing that will start from the beginning is that, yes, chronic absenteeism peaked in, in the, in, in, during COVID nineteen. Right now, what we're seeing and the big takeaway, the gaps in chronic absence rates between vulnerable student populations and other students that increased during the pandemic have not continued to widen. But that's not to say that we're anywhere close to where we were before the pandemic. We still have really high chronic absenteeism rates and we still see big gaps through different, and that we'll show you throughout this presentation. Next slide, please. Thank you. So as Lanay and I kind of walked through these slides, I wanted to highlight that when we look at this data, you know, we're going to kind of be looking at it in the same way. And so we show three different sets of, of bars up on here. Number one is the orange bar, and that's a pre-pandemic cohort. So what was happening in chronic absenteeism before the pandemic? The blue bars, the light blue bars, that is, is the pandemic cohort that started with chronic absenteeism. And so those are the light blue bars. Finally, the darker blue bars are black. I can't even see how that turned out on that. That's going to be the post-pandemic cohort. And so when we look at these, then we, those three bars represent groupings that we're going to show what's happening. And we really look at this because there's a good correlation here between fifth graders and seventh graders. Now, we're going to start out with those students that are in free and reduced lunch or economically disadvantaged. And so we do that because we want to understand, you know, is there differences between these two groups? On the left-hand side over, over here, we'll see those students that are not free and reduced lunch or economically disadvantaged. On the right-hand side, those students that are economically disadvantaged. And so as we're looking at that, one of the things that you can see is the slopes of the bars on the right-hand side are higher no matter what way that we're looking at them. So you know, if we, for example, look at grade five on the free and reduced lunch, we start at thirteen percent, goes up to twenty-one percent, fifteen percent in the light blue bar to thirty-five percent, and still twenty-seven to thirty-eight. And so what we can see is that those students that are economically disadvantaged are missing much more school than those kids that are not. With that, let me turn it over to Lanay.
Great. Thank you, Paul. So we also looked at differences between different racial and ethnic groups, and these same patterns hold. So essentially, these spikes were quite pronounced during the pandemic. That light blue line, you can see the spike is really high. Those, those gaps have started to level out, right? But we're still significantly higher than we were pre-pandemic for, for all student groups. I think as we dig into this and really look at what student groups might need additional supports, different evidence-based interventions, looking at the data in these disaggregated ways can help us understand some of those patterns. So I, I want to just pause here and give people a minute to look at this because I think this is really important to note that students, you know, previously, yes, there were gaps between different student groups, but those gaps have become more pronounced. The other thing I think what might pop out at you as you look at this is now fifth graders are starting at a much higher chronic absence level than they were pre-pandemic, right? And seeing this at different grade spans gives us a better understanding of just how much that impact is on student groups. So the Arizona Task Force, which I had the pleasure of serving on under Terry Clark and her team's leadership, there was a related chronic absence recommendation from the task force about collecting actionable data to identify challenges and drive solutions. So really looking by grade and by different student groups to make sure that schools and districts have access to that comprehensive data that can make actionable decisions. And I think that's a really important piece. As we looked at that data, right, that's a snapshot of the state. That's individual student-level data at the state level across all of the state. You see those gaps. You can imagine a school or district looking at data in their own setting to see those gaps, right? So these gaps continue, but they are not widening at this point. That's, that's the good news that we can share. We also wanted to look at the proficiency of students in English Language Arts and Math. So this is looking at English Language Arts. So if a student was proficient in English Language Arts on the state exam in fifth grade, you can see that their rate of chronic absence was lower, both pre-pandemic, during the pandemic. That spike is not as pronounced for, for students who are proficient in ELA in fifth grade and post-pandemic. On the right-hand side, you see the, the students who are not proficient in ELA in fifth grade and how pronounced those increases in chronic absence were. Now, we don't know the direction of this relationship. We know that they're connected. If you're not coming to school, you're not learning the material. And if you're not learning the material, you're falling further behind and you might feel a little more challenged to show up to school. So there's this, you know, relationship that's happening here. So this lower likelihood of chronic absence for ELA proficient students was, was true across all three cohorts. Next, we're going to look at math. And the same pattern holds. So pre-pandemic, ELA, if you were, excuse me, if you were proficient in math in fifth grade, your rate of chronic absence was lower, same during the pandemic, and then the same post-pandemic. Looking at that right-hand sign, you see that really dramatic spike during the pandemic for students who are not math proficient in fifth grade. How much of that, you know, happened in seventh grade for the chronic absence? So it really spiked there. I also think it really sticks out that now students are starting at a much higher level. So the current group is, bless you, is starting, you know, at thirty-five percent chronically absent in fifth grade if they are not math proficient in fifth grade. This is, this is something we definitely need to look further. We wanted to share these snapshots and, and ask if there are any questions.
And only one last thing that I would highlight is, one of the things that we would say is that, why is this important? Number one, when we see students that are chronically absent, they end up typically continuing to be chronically absent. They end up not doing well in mathematics and English, other courses. They get disengaged and ultimately they either graduate unprepared for college or career, or they, they don't go to college and career. And so that's why we want to raise this issue and continue to, you know, hurt on people getting their students back to school.
Okay, fantastic. Well, I think we have time for questions. Let's go with Dr. Core, Superintendent Horn. And then I want to make sure that our guests that are on the, virtually, that they have an opportunity to ask questions too. So, Dr. Core.
Thank you, President Haley. Wonderful presentation, as scary as the data is. So here's a question that maybe has no answer. Why are they absent? Do we have any, I suppose we would all be able to guess, but do we know?
Well, I would say you're, you're right. There, there is no one answer and no silver bullets. You know, when we've looked around at other research, we can talk about some of the starting points. Number one is still, is there good transportation for students to get to school? Number two, we saw during the pandemic, it really pushed up, but we still see students that have to contribute to their family, watch younger siblings as those aspects as well. And so those types of things and, you know, the prevalence of students being able to do more at home. You know, if I miss school, I can catch up online, has led to students not being at school.
I would, I would add, so that was not a part of this research because we were really just looking at statewide numbers. It would be really interesting and good to drill down to a district level or a school level to identify that. I will mention that the Chronic Absence Task Force, you know, it had many practitioners there who were from schools and districts. And they did talk about looking at their data of the why and what's under that. Some of it's, you know, ensuring consistent messaging about the importance of attendance. And I think that there were some changes in attendance policies in terms of if a student is ill, when they can come, when they cannot come, that, you know, just making sure there's clarity around those policies was something that the practitioners spoke quite a bit about as well.
Thank you.
Okay, Superintendent Horn, and then I see Dr. Clay. You have your hand raised, so you'll be next.
Thank you. I have a comment. The, the idea that a third of our students are missing eighteen days of school or more in my mind is a real catastrophe and an emergency for our state. Ninety percent of my time and energy in that of our, of our department are geared toward helping schools get better academic results and raising proficiency rates. And you can't do that for kids who don't show up in school. You can't teach a student who's not there. And so we need radical efforts to solve this problem. A lot of what I've seen in studies are what I would consider soft solutions, like talk to the parents and things like that. We have to create a motivation for parents to be sure their children go to school. And with that in mind, my proposed solution, which at the, in the absence of legislation, would be up to the school districts, but I can make the recommendation to them, is that we bring back the old system, which was nine absences, nine absences, and you flunked the course. And five tardies count as an absence. Parents don't want their kids to flunk courses. They don't want them to miss out on graduation on time. And if we, and if the school districts would adopt those kinds of policies, I think we would see the parents motivated and we'd see a radical drop in absenteeism. And as a result of that, better academic results. So that's my proposal, and I want to thank you for the information that helps us realize what an incredible emergency this is. Thank you.
Fantastic. We now have Dr. Clay. You have opportunity to ask questions.
Good morning. I have a question and a comment. First is, I agree with Dr. Core. The big question is why I always believe in getting to the root of the fruit and not reacting to the fruit because that's not going to help anything. So what is, what's the reasoning? I know that in Cochise County, we have a Student Advisory Council. And this, this council consists of all students throughout Cochise County. Cochise County is just as big as Rhode Island and Connecticut put together. Okay, what these students have told me is that one of the biggest reasons students don't come to school is because of bullying and because of behavior and mental health. Okay, these are coming from the mouth of the babes. We need to start looking at that. We need to start looking at the root of the fruit of all of our problems before we start actually hitting on what we see. So if we could find out somehow the why before we act, that would be exponentially great and I believe a good strategy. Thank you.
Fantastic. Member Meyerson.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I think sort of hitting on some of the themes that some of my colleagues shared. I do feel like we've had so many presentations that really go deep on the problem. So there's been just such an immense amount of studying of the problem itself. But there, I haven't seen as many sort of deep studies on possible solutions or solutions that really get at sort of meaningful impact to address the problem. And so I'm curious, as you've done this deep dive, what the next step is of identifying solutions to the problem so that we can then take action because it's, again, I couldn't agree more that this is a huge crisis and I appreciate you continuing to shine a light on that. But I'd be really curious at the next step of what we're going to do about it.
Yeah. I think that's a great question, and I'll note that my team and I have done some of this work not only in Arizona, but across the West region. And we were conducting a study looking at evidence-based interventions that address this because to the point, you have to understand some of what's causing it to be able to address it. So there are evidence-based solutions that are out there that are effective. And some of those are, you know, depending on what they are, could be more labor-intensive at the school level. But there are different levels of kinds of interventions. I would also point out that the Chronic Absence Task Force Report had several evidence-based interventions noted in it that could be effective because I think that's the next step. It's saying, this is a problem and it's the urgency and it's the, how do we address this? Because we need to, we need to take action now. And I think that's the other point about the task force recommendation on looking at actionable data, that that needs to be done. You, you don't want to wait until a student has been absent ten times, fifteen times to intervene. You need to be looking for that pattern early on in the school year to be able to provide the supports and evidence-based solution. So I think that if we are looking for what evidence-based solutions fit the, fit the problem, fit the local community and what the needs are, I think that would be an important next step.
And I would add on that one of the things that we've been doing at Helios is we have a partnership with Valley of the Sun is being able to identify data earlier. And how can, how can principals and administrators actually identify that data earlier, reach out to families and students because that's, that's going to have some early impacts. Sometimes you'd be surprised at how many students and families just don't understand where the absences come from, especially as you go throughout the year. The second thing, and not in Arizona, but we've also partnered in other states to really look deeply, you know, through student surveys, parent surveys, teacher surveys, to kind of understand and triangulate why students are missing from multiple sources. And we want to bring that data back too as well to share.
I think that would be great. The only thing I would say is, I do think that a lot of the recommendations that are sort of out there are things that schools are, are doing already, right? And so I think that, that, but they're not seen, or the, the sort of results of those efforts aren't sort of universally kind of solving the crisis, obviously. And so, so I'm eager for kind of the next phase of, of the work and eager to hear, to go more into the data to understand the real impact of where we can see results. So thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, Member Meyerson, just a quick addendum. The Chronic Absenteeism Task Force, in addition to their recommendation, produced a resource guide that had some solutions. So we'll make sure to share that with you all again. And then as, as follow-up from the Chronic Absenteeism Task Force with schools and districts across the state, they, there's a initiative to put chronic absenteeism plans into place. So schools and districts are doing that. And while this is not, this is not where we want to be, Arizona has moved from first in the nation in chronic absenteeism to fifteenth. So there has been some positive momentum.
That's not great, but okay. I want to be last. Member Kat Nees.
Thank you, President Haley. I was actually just going to ask for those resources, so I'll be really quick. So thank you, Sean, if you can share those with us. And if there's any other evidence-based solutions, I know that I particularly would be interested in reviewing this. Thank you.
Thanks, Member Kat Nees. Any other questions from our board members or Vice President Haggerman, do you have any comments? Okay. Well, thank you all so much for making the time. We really appreciate it. This is obviously an issue of great importance and plays into student learning. So thank you. All right. So moving on to item five B, Executive Director Ross.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Item five B relates to the topic addressed quite by quite a few speakers in the call to the public today. It is a presentation discussion and possible action to open Arizona's Algebra II standards for revision. With us presenting today is Ebony McKenney, the Director of Mathematics and Educational Technology from the Arizona Department of Education.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. Like Sean said, my name is Ebony McKenney. I am the Director of K-12 Math and EdTech Standards at the Arizona Department of Ed. I am not an Arizona native, but I have, my entire teaching career has been here in the state of Arizona. And so I am a proud public educator. And so I'm here to talk to you a little bit about making a case for change when we think about our Algebra II standards. Next slide, please. Thank you. So as two of my colleagues spoke to you earlier, the Arizona Math Collaborative started in two thousand and fifteen as a result of a National Science Foundation grant that was started by our post-secondary counterparts. So it was really our friends at the Chandler Gilbert Community College that got this started. And so this collaborative has been around for quite some time and it is composed of mathematical professors from this, all three of our state universities and community colleges, as well as pre-service teachers, and then of course, Arizona High School math leaders. As Suzie mentioned, the Association of Teachers of Mathematics, the Arizona Math Leaders. We had a member of the Arizona Board of Regents, and then of course, myself and our high school math specialists from the Arizona Department of Ed. And so this collaborative has been around, like I said, since two thousand and fifteen. And so we've been really looking at what is it that will better, best support high school teachers and leaders in the math space? Next slide, please. And so the most recent development in this math collaborative has been our partnership with the Dana Center out of the University of Texas, Austin. Several of us will be there later this week. And so these slides were shared with you earlier. And so the link here is to the Project of the Launchers Initiative, and that's looking at high school math pathways into post-secondary across the entire U.S. There are several states, about twenty folks in the cohort right now. And so there's a, was a massive research brief, and so I think it was like fifty-four pages. So, you know, peruse at your leisure. If you have questions, please reach out. But in this work, they have provided us with technical assistance and support for this grant, and it has allowed us to bring together a task force from the state of Arizona. And again, like I said, we had all three universities that participated, our Arizona Board of Regents, high school math teachers, and folks from several other colleges as well. And so this partnership started in two thousand and two, and we are wrapping up at the end of this week. And so from that task force, we came up with two recommendations. The first being the need to revisit and revise the Algebra II standards, and that's really a starting point. And that's really a starting point. Um, the other piece is to think about additional pathways, um, from between high school into post-secondary. When we think about the world, it is changing quite dramatically. I had the pleasure of attending the Data Science Summit last week. Um, and so there is a lot of changes happening. And so we have to think about what is it that we need to do to better prepare our students? And so I believe Ted Ko spoke to this idea of data literacy, data science. Um, and so with the revision and revisiting of Algebra II as our starting point, we want to think about what is it the math that all students need to know, regardless of if they are going into university, post-secondary, um, community college, trade school, or right into the workforce. And so, um, that question has led this work. And so this is where we have landed as a task force as far as why we're coming to you with this request. Next slide, please. And so here, if you can move that timer just a smidge, um, is a look at what is all of the content that is currently in the three required courses, um, the top three for the state of Arizona. So Algebra II, over the course of 181 days, um, teachers are required to cover 18 topics. For geometry, which is typically taught, um, in sophomore year, we cover 16 topics. And then you get to junior year, right? One of the most important years of our, for our students. Teachers are expected to cover 32 different topics in the same amount of time that they were covering 18 and 16. We've added the pre-calculus, AP pre-calc, um, just so that you get a sense of there are 15 topics. And several of those topics, those ones, um, that are in grade the end, aren't tested. But a lot of what's in the purple, which is the Algebra II, is also covered in AP pre-calc. Right? And so we have this overlap of information. And so when we think about the students that are taking AP pre-calculus, they are more than likely destined to go into the STEM field. I think our, um, student speaker earlier talked about being a future scientist, right? And so that would be appropriate for them. Um, but when we think about students who maybe are looking for humanities or liberal arts, something a little bit different, we don't necessarily need to cover all of that information, which we have verified with our post-secondary mathematicians, um, and math educators at the university level. There's a lot of things in our Algebra II standards that are no longer relevant and are no longer even taught at the university level. And so Susie, who spoke to you earlier, was the director at the time when these standards were updated. And so we know that what we're covering, uh, what we're asking teachers to cover, um, currently is more than what students are needed, are need, um, are required to complete when we think about an Algebra II, or excuse me, an algebra course in, um, the university space. Next slide, please. So again, I come back to this question. What is the mathematics that all students need to know? Next slide, please. And so we did a little bit of research. And so with the help of the Dana Center, um, we were able to bring together Arizona high school teachers and math leaders and some of our post-secondary faculty here in the state. Um, and so this was some of the highlights of the work, um, the conversation that came from the time that we spent together. And so several of the standards are no longer relevant, as I said, right? AP pre-calculus covers a lot of topics that are specifically needed for students that are headed on that STEM track. And of course, there's too much content to cover at depth, um, in order for students to really be successful in Algebra II. And then of course, that question comes up again. Is Algebra II meeting the needs of all of our students when we're thinking about beyond that fourth year of high school? Next slide, please. And so the other piece, um, we did, um, some research again with, in partnership with the Dana Center. And we were able to work with university professors in other, uh, majors. And so we had business and accounting, engineering and science, humanities, all of those things that are listed there. And so we also, um, asked them the same questions. Next slide, please. And so these are, um, the summary of those preliminary findings also have been shared with you as well, the full report. But these are the kind of standout items. Um, many of the students come to college with gaps in their conceptual understanding of basic high school math. And part of that is because they're being, we're asking teachers to cover too much. And so that it is a very shallow understanding that our students are getting versus a really deep conceptual understanding of the mathematical content that will then, they will generalize and carry with them. The other piece is that a lot of students, a lot of schools are not providing enough preparation in statistics. A lot of high schools offer AP stats, but there's no intro to stats class. Um, and the amount of statistics that is covered in say Algebra I or Algebra II is very limited. And so when we think about the world that we live in, it is data-rich. And so this idea of really better preparing our students in this space of statistics so that they can be, um, productive consumers, if you will, in the world. Again, algebra calculus, right? That connection, it only is applying to some students. The stakeholders are also described, right? High school geometry. Do we still really need a whole year? I don't, I don't know. Um, many students, um, also come to college with low self-efficacy. So this idea of feeling successful in mathematics, which we also know starts as early as elementary school. Um, we see it really pronounced in middle school and then that continues into high school. And so it really is challenging for students when we think about, how do we set them up for success? If they don't see themselves as successful, it is hard to get them to engage in some of those higher level math courses. And there are a couple of students, of course, that said, you know, high school math absolutely did a great job in preparing them for, um, success. But I want to highlight the word persevere in difficulty in mathematics. And so that's one of our standards for mathematical practice, which we, we want kids to engage in kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. This idea about being able to persevere in struggling difficult problems. And then the last, um, big takeaway was some majors need little quantitative preparation. And so our bulk of learning in Algebra II is not needed for a lot of kids. Next slide, please. And so our, our recommendations are to open Algebra II, um, for revision in, um, 2025. And then also think about what are some of those other additional high leverage math courses that might be better options? Data science, statistics, quantitative reasoning, what could we do to, um, either build out those standards and then create courses in those high school spaces? And then the other piece is our high school course, um, assessment, excuse me, is the ACT. Um, but we know, what we know about ACT is it is assessing standards that in Arizona are taught, taught in middle school. It's not even covering what is covered in high school courses. And so this idea of rethinking, how are we going to better assess what our kids are being taught and what they know and understand in high school math courses? So what questions do you have?
Great. Thank you so much. Um, Ms. McKenney, we really appreciate your presentation. Are there questions from members of the board? I can't see yet if we have any from our virtual participants. But any from folk, uh, Dr. Clay, thank you so much.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Ebony. I have a question for you.
Yes.
First of all, thank you very much for your briefing, um, and your presentation. I will definitely share this with other people so that they can have a good understanding on what's going on. What you guys are doing. Um, but just to clarify, the requested math courses, um, that, that, um, you have suggested, are they relevant to the world today for students?
So that's a big question. Um, so because of Arizona state legislation, right? Our high school students are required to take Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II, and then a fourth year math credit. Um, and so you and I both know, both having lived in Cochise County, um, what is offered as a fourth year varies a great deal across our state. And so the recommendation from the task force is to start with Algebra II, simply because that is one of the biggest gatekeeper courses in the high school pathway. Um, a lot of students struggle to pass that course. Um, and then that keeps them from then meeting that fourth year requirement because they're having to retake that course. And so we are absolutely open to the idea of looking at all of our courses. But we figured we'd start with Algebra II and then work our way back. But if the board decides let's do it all, then we will work to make it happen. But, um, I think as you pointed out, Algebra II is meeting the needs of a small group of students, but it's not meeting the need of all Arizona students. And so part of that is taking some of those, um, topics out to allow for more space for deeper understanding so that they are in fact better prepared. But yes.
Okay. So the, the reason why I ask that, because it does appear, uh, that some of the courses, like the statistics, et cetera, et cetera. Those are relevant to me, to what students need to use when they leave high school. And I, I will, and this, and this, this is just personal everyone. So don't beat me up. All right. Being a, um, high school teacher, I found that Algebra II, yes, I, I think that's a gateway. And I think that, I don't think that's for everyone because I know that there was a large amount of, of students when I was in high school felt that they were the worst thing in the world, that felt that they were, were horrible, that they were stupid, that they were dumb, that, and, and, and that was, and it hurt me to see them have to go through that when they were smart. Okay? But the society was saying, you're not smart and you, you, so I do believe that if we do bring those hard courses in, that are relevant to what's going on today, that are relevant to jobs that they can take over. Okay. And some people think that's dumbing down. I don't think it's dumbing down. I think it's an evolution of what we need. There are some people who will be rocket science. There's some people who will need that. Okay? But then there are other ones, they need to spend their time on what was put in their hearts to do when they get out of school. So, um, the relevant, my, so my suggestion is just ensure that those courses, those alternate, alternative courses are rigorous and relevant to what's going on in the job market today. What is needed so that they are prepared to go out there and do the coding, you know? And, and all the other things, you know, the robotics and all the other things that they need to do. Um, and this will, I believe, will cause a new motivation in our students when they see that they can attain and that they can do these things. So thank you very much for that.
Yeah. I want to share one other piece. Um, this is not, was not in the presentation, but in, in answering your question, uh, we have seven districts here in the state of Arizona that will be piloting, um, ISQR, which is an intro to stats and quantitative reasoning course that we are piloting in, um, partnership with the, um, with WestEd and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And so that will take place over the next, um, two years. But that is a little bit of a ways out. And so knowing that that will be an option. But again, we are beholden to Arizona state legislation. And so in statute, it does say, right? Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II. And so we're looking at what are other fourth year courses that would offer, like you said, more relevant, um, content for students. But because of that legislation, we have to really think about how can we, um, better set kids up for success in those required courses?
Well, thank you very much. My last statement is math should give motivation, direction and purpose to our future leaders. Motivation, direction and purpose.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you.
Uh, member Kat Nees.
Yes. Uh, thank you, President Haley. Um, so first off, uh, thank you for presenting. Uh, this is something that's extremely important to all of our kids, but also it's something that is really important to myself as a math teacher. I, I definitely think that, um, what I, what I've seen over the years too, is that, that Algebra II piece can kind of, uh, be a gatekeeper for a lot of kids in terms of the pathway that they're on. Um, and I think that, uh, one thing that I want to share like with my colleagues is something that I look at in, for data is that if a kid is able to get to calculus, they have an 83% chance of graduating college in four years. So that's a higher indicator than your race, your socioeconomic income, what zip code you live in. Um, and I think that if we are providing a pathway that gets more kids to higher levels of math, it allows them to, um, decide for themselves what they're going to be in their futures. And so this is something that is, uh, I think exciting, something that I think is going to be, uh, a very, uh, interesting process over the next, uh, 12 to 18 months. But I also think that it's something that could help a lot of, a lot of students. You know, as Jaime Escalante says, you know, students rise to our levels of expectations. And I think that, um, when we as a state are pushing, um, our students to be able to do, uh, better things, things that they're qualified for, things that they can do. I think that it shows them that they can also be whatever it is that they want to be. And so I just want to commend you and your work. Um, thank you, Susie. Thank you, Ted, uh, for your comments earlier. Thank you, Janice, for your comments earlier. Um, it's always great to see, you know, all these different, uh, minds working together to make positive change.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ebony.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? I have a few comments, I think, just looking at the NAEP scores. And, uh, to me, I was really disappointed at our state. And I understand that, um, there was a, a comment that you made on an earlier slide about the lack of depth of knowledge or sort of gaps in individual understanding. And my question perhaps for you and the other, um, leaders that participated in this group is, um, have we backtracked and looked at what we were doing at, um, in earlier math to make sure that the foundation is set so that individuals can be successful in Algebra II? And if we have not, what steps is ADE taking to help support our district schools across the state to get on track?
So President Haley, thank you for that, um, question. It made my elementary teacher heart very happy. As a former fifth grade math teacher, um, that is a little bit of a challenge. So the thing you have to realize is that, um, elementary teachers, um, typically have one content course in mathematics, one methods course. Um, and then typically whatever university they attend, they are required to take college algebra, right? And so you have folks who are building that foundation and they have the least amount of training, um, when it comes to teaching mathematics. Um, what I will say is that our K-8 standards are stellar. The challenge is changing practice, um, and changing beliefs about mathematics. A lot of folks go into elementary education because they love kids and they like reading. In my case, I was a little bit of a unicorn. I loved teaching math. Um, and so I was there to, so provide that support and encouragement to my colleagues. But you don't have that very often in the elementary space. And so myself and my two other math specialists, we're a small team. Um, and so we provide a lot of professional learning to the best of our ability in the time that we have. But Arizona geographically is quite large. Um, and so we are doing the best that we can, um, to provide that professional learning and training for both elementary, um, and middle school teachers. But it's, it's really about changing beliefs and building that self-efficacy in our elementary teachers about their ability to teach mathematics. And so we are doing our very best, um, and we know that that is part of the challenge. And so, um, we are already having those conversations, but we have nothing definitive yet. Because of course, the focus has always been on middle school mathematics and high school mathematics. But we know that, right? It all starts in elementary.
So a question is like, in addition, we have obviously third grade reading requirements and expectations. And the state has advanced policy that requires that our educators be certified in the science of reading. Do we need to, instead of just rethinking our math standards and expectations and the courses that our students are teach, are taking, do we also need to rethink what are the expectations of our educators in K through eight or middle school or high school? And sort of, do we need to put some guidelines in place similar to what we've done for third grade reading and science of literacy or science?
There are a lot of states that are already ahead of us in that sense. Take the state of Louisiana, for instance, they have, um, an early numeracy project. And so they are doing strategic work in looking at elementary mathematics and providing that support for those teachers. And we would absolutely love, um, for that to happen in the state of Arizona. But that also requires funding, additional staffing and, and time in order to make that happen. But several states are already doing that work and have had great success. Another example is Georgia. Um, their Department of Ed also has a, um, early numeracy team as well. It is not something that we currently have in the state of Arizona, um, but we would be absolutely open to the idea of, um, looking into that. Because like I said, we would love to support our elementary teachers to make sure that foundation is solid before they even get to middle school and high school.
A couple, um, I have, do you want to interject? I have a couple of other comments or questions is, um, one, as we think about this endeavor, it's one thing if a student is taking Algebra II and we have certain expectations and there's sort of that articulation agreement between a high school graduate that then goes into a higher, a post-secondary institution. There's like, you've taken Algebra II, we know, or you've taken pre-trig or, uh, pre-calculus, or you've taken calculus. There's a certain level of expectation and we will give you credits and we'll place you into, um, whatever courses appropriate for what you might think you want to major in. I'm, what I majored in is not what I have done. Uh, so, uh, that, there's that. The question that I would have is what steps would our guidance counselors that are helping our students figure out what courses to take? Or the math department that is saying, oh, you should take X or Y or Z course? What will it require of our, um, state educators and our particularly high school teams, uh, need to do in order to help students navigate all those particular options? without, as one of our speakers earlier said, tracking students and frankly, closing off options?
Yeah, great question. Um, so part of that work, um, will come from once we determine what, um, these courses are. What does Algebra Two now look like? And then if we consider any additional standards that we build out for better fourth year options, it's really about educating, um, educating our school counselors to know and understand what these options and these pathways mean. Um, so we shared with you in the appendix, an example of Idaho's pathway as well as the state of Ohio's pathways. And so they did some really strategic work in meeting with guidance counselors at the high school level to share this information and provide really clear guidance on what does that look like? Where does this path lead, right? The idea, um, President Haley, like you said, is to provide a pathway that leads to multiple opportunities. You're going to change your mind. And so if you take, say, Intro to Stats and Quantitative Reasoning, and then you decide, you know what, I think I want to be a statistician and now I want to take AP Stats. We want to make sure that those classes align so that you can get on and off those ramps as kids do because they change their mind and they experience something and they want to try something different. And so that would require us to build out some additional guidance. So we currently have fourth year guidance. Um, but again, as I shared with, um, to Dr. Clay's point, it, fourth year math is kind of the Wild West. It is what is, who's available? What teachers do you have? Do they have time in their schedule? What else could they offer? And so fourth year courses across the state at this point aren't equitable. Depending on where you live, right? And so we want to think about what are those required courses that all kids will have access to that will lead to those pathways. But it is really about, once we make a decision, really making sure that we educate our counselors so they know and understand where all of those pathways lead.
That's great. I have a few more questions, but I can follow up with Executive Director Ross, uh, Superintendent Horn.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, something you said about the training of teachers in the teachers colleges caught my attention. You said they only get one year of training.
As some, as depending on the university, yes, they have one methods course in mathematics.
Math teaching. And, um, uh, as a superintendent, I serve on the Board of Regents and we have the president of, uh, Northern Arizona University with us. And I would like to hear your recommendation as to how many years should be required in methods of teaching mathematics to K-12, uh, K-8 teachers.
I don't know that I'm, I'm the right person to answer that question. I, as an elementary school teacher, got a master's in mathematics teaching. So again, I'm outside of the norm, but I think we have to do a better job in preparing our elementary school teachers, at least another course or two, or some ongoing training. Um, in reference to President Haley's question earlier, there are several states that have gone through and as part of teacher credentialing, have added a component of continued education and making a requirement that some of those courses be in mathematics in order to maintain your teaching certificate. Um, so there's, there's a lot of different ways to think about how we better support our current in classroom teachers to provide that additional support so that they have that self-efficacy to teach math better. But then also thinking about what does that conversation look like in the post-secondary space? And what could we do to better prepare our elementary teachers in particular, um, as far as what happens in those pre-service courses? And I think both, um, presidents could speak to what that is and what that would be, what would be appropriate. But I think the more math classes, the better, but that's just me.
Well, I can't think of a better person than you to say how many years they, they all should have because they're all teaching math, uh, K through eight.
Yeah.
Uh, certainly K through six.
Yes.
Uh, so, uh, so how many years do you think we should have?
I don't, I don't know that I would say years, but I would think about being really strategic about the courses. And so when we think about elementary, um, mathematics, we have different domains. And so really thinking about what are some courses we could build out to meet the needs of each of those domains? Um, particularly say fractions, for example, fractions are introduced in third grade in the state of Arizona. But what happens in third grade ultimately affects what happens in Algebra One and Algebra Two. And so really thinking about, if I'm a third grade teacher, I need to have some additional coursework and understanding fractions really, really well. Right? If I'm a K-two teacher, I'm teaching numbers, whole numbers, uh, place value, right? I might need a course or two in that so that I'm better prepared to teach so that kids have a real firm understanding of the number system. So I think we have to think about what is in that grade band? And what would those courses be that would help support that teacher learning, um, based on that? I don't, I don't want to add anything else to teachers' plates by any means, right? They are already overwhelmed, but I think if we're really strategic about what are the courses that we offer based on the grade band that you teach to support that foundational learning, that would be a conversation to have.
Awesome. We've got two more questions. So, uh, Dr. Hagerman and then Member Kat Neese.
Um, I'm not sure if it's a, uh, question or comment. I just, um, do think we've, I guess my suggestion is we really focus on the Algebra Two first. I seem like we've talked in a lot of directions of a lot of, at this point, um, I'm definitely open to the idea that, um, the current scope of the class doesn't represent something that can be guaranteed or viable, either for the staff or the students. But I do think that balancing act of making sure the expectations lead to the outcomes that we want for kids, but also making it a reasonable scope is, is, is a good, a good first step. So I'm just suggesting we keep our focus on Algebra Two and then keep that balancing act between the guaranteed and viability of that class.
Yeah, thank you.
Member Kat Neese.
Thank you, President Haley. Um, I just had a, had a question, uh, because it's, it's my understanding that a lot of the standards that are in pre-calculus are also in Algebra Two. Um, so do you know like what percentage of that overlap there is?
We're saying probably roughly maybe 25, 30%. But the other piece to that, Jason, you have to remember is there are some things that are in Algebra Two that are not even taught in post-secondary, right? So there's that chunk that is now covered in AP pre-calc. And there's some things that we need to pull out that are no longer relevant, right? And so there's a couple of different components to that, but that's a great question. Yeah, we'll say roughly about 25, 30%. But we could give you a definite answer if you need one.
Yeah, I was just curious because I, I think that what you're talking about a lot of is the relevancy of a lot of the standards and, um, sort of where we are now versus where we were when the standards were created. So I agree with Dr. Hagerman about, you know, this is about Algebra Two. Right now. And so, so I'm, I'm, I'm excited. I want to be involved in those.
Yes, we'd love to have you. Absolutely.
All right, we have another question. Uh, Dr. Core.
Yeah, uh, super quick. I just want to, I, I enjoyed watching the mathematicians struggle with percentages there. So I, I, um, but, but with that said, uh, I, I just want to quickly support what Dr. Hagerman said. Mathematics is a huge, big old issue, right? And, and post-secondary and teacher prep, there, there's a million aspects of it. But I, I, I'd like to draw some parentheses around Algebra Two and, and, you know, dig into that.
We're happy to start there and we can come back.
And, and I'm, and I'm certain we'll get the percentage at some point. Thank you.
That's great. Any other comments or questions? Member Kat Neese, do you have another question or comment? Okay. Um, okay. So I guess the next item on the agenda is, do I have an emotion to approve? Or do we have any other comments or questions for Director McKinney? No, okay, great. So, um, do I, the next item is, do I have a motion to approve the opening of Arizona's Algebra Two standards for revision?
They're moved.
Uh, Member Kat Neese made the first motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Dr. Clay made the second. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time and for your enthusiasm. We appreciate it.
You're so welcome. Thank you.
Awesome. We're going to move, uh, we will take a break. I think the goal is to take a break after this next item, if that's all right. Um, if anyone needs to use the restroom, please feel free. Um, but we are going to move to item five C. This is a presentation discussion of the Move On When Ready Annual Report, uh, on early literacy initiatives and other, uh, matters. And this is just an information-only presentation. And with that, Executive Director Ross.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Uh, as President Haley mentioned earlier in the meeting, the National Assessment of Educational Progress scores were released recently. Um, and as a result of the release of those scores, there was a request from several board members to, um, have a presentation from the department on early literacy and some department initiatives related to that. So with us today, um, is Associate, Deputy Associate Superintendent Linda Burrows and the Director of English and English Arts, Tiana Sanchez.
Hello, thank you, President Haley, uh, Superintendent Horn, members. We're so happy to be here today. Again, my name is Linda Burrows. I'm back again talking about Mauer. Um, and I'm the Deputy Associate Superintendent of Academic Standards and I brought with me today my colleague.
Hello, my name is Tiana Sanchez. I'm the Director of K-12 ELA and Move On When Reading.
Next slide, please. So today we wanted to share with you the state of Mauer a little bit more specifically than what I presented in December, as well as bring in some of our data from the Foundation of, uh, Literacy Coaching, as well as our NAEP data, which has just recently been introduced. So to start off, I wanted to share with you our new Move On When Reading portal. So the Mauer portal is currently being beta tested and we're super excited and getting a lot of positive feedback on it. It will be live for all schools in the 2025, 2026 school year. One of the nice things with the new portal is that it provides step-by-step guidance for LEAs as it moves them through the system as they do their literacy plan. So this is to help alleviate some of that burden that maybe charter schools and smaller schools have when they feel overwhelmed with the literacy plan. You can see by the, um, screenshot that you, on the left-hand side is a visual of that guide that kind of takes them step by step by step as they go through their Mauer plan. Also, we have our support, which, uh, Director Sanchez's team provides that constant feedback and reviews with LEAs. They all have LEAs that they work with year after year to provide some of that consistency. Tiana's team also offers office hours and support to just the LEAs and also the vendors too, as they're providing and wanting to get feedback on the vetted curriculums. And then lastly, the reporting with the new Mauer portal, we will have advanced reporting features that will get us information, including subgroups on our special needs students as well. Next slide, please. So I wanted to share with you, uh, some of our Mauer data just for the last year. And so this shows you from our kinder, first, second and third graders, where the screener data is being reported. Again, this is self-reported data and different screeners because we don't have just one screener, but on an average, you can see at the beginning of the year where kiddos are coming in, middle of the year, end of the year. And then I also wanted to include the beginning of this year data because we still have not gotten our middle of the year data yet. But that's where the 2023, 2024 schools came in and where we started off. So it's nice to see the beginning of the year data for most grades is at or a little bit higher than the, the previous year. Next slide, please. I also wanted to share with you the Foundations of Reading exam. This is again, the same slide as December, but again, I wanted to point out that the, the work that Tiana's team is doing and our universities are doing, and are really preparing our educators to pass the first time when they take that Foundations of Reading exam. So again, wanted to focus on the positive that the work we are doing to prepare our educators is proving to be adequate, more than adequate to get those teachers ready for that exam. Next slide. So this is a slide that I wanted to show our AASA exam as proficient over time. So again, with that literacy initiative to push that up, we were making some great progress. Obviously, the pandemic hit and we've, you know, rebounded, but nothing ever is in a straight line. So while we did decrease a little bit this year, um, you know, we are slowly moving, moving our way up and working on, on the problem. Next slide, please. So part of us working out on this problem of increasing literacy is what I think our big shining bright spot is our Foundation of Literacy Coaching Grant that we have. And so I wanted to share some data with that. And so this is students that are at benchmark. And again, this is our screener, comes from our screener data. And that's for this current year. And I have the beginning of the year data and the mid-year data. So the blue line is the average from all the schools that are participating. But I wanted to highlight a couple of schools that are really implementing this program with fidelity. They are systematically from the admin to the principal, to the coaches, to the teacher. Every person is on board and buying in. And these are also schools too, that have been with the program. This is their third year of coaching. So we're really starting to see some big gains. So Gadsden, you can see the beginning of the year and Glendale Elementary also at the beginning of the year to even just the middle of the year data. And those are kiddos that are coming at benchmark. Next slide, please. So these are students that are approaching benchmark. We actually want to see this going down, right? We want to see fewer kids either at benchmark and at risk. So this is the data that we want to see. Next slide, please. And then lastly, at risk, we want to see this data going down. We want to see fewer kids at risk because we want to see more kids at benchmark. And again, Gadsden and Glendale are showing a perfect example of staying the course, right? This is not something that's going to get fixed in a year. It's not going to get fixed in five years. It's going to take a real commitment and time. And we can see this data shows that over the past three years, these schools are, um, showing that increase. Couple of things to highlight with both Gadsden and Glendale and honestly, all the participants is that the growth of the participants in this grant program is higher than the state average. So while other states are averaging, or while other schools are averaging, you know, some gains, the schools involved in this program are really excelling above the state average. And we have several schools participating in the program that actually have 100% of their kiddos at benchmark with the reading program. But again, this is three years that we've had this program in place, so we don't see that reflected in the AASA data. So I'm super excited to see next year's data, what, what that will look like. So that kind of leads me on to our next slide. Thank you for reading my mind. Our NAEP scores. So I have a couple of slides in here with our NAEP scores. And you can see Arizona did kind of lose some ground with, uh, with regards to our, our overall reading scores. NAEP showed decrease in reading, but again, we are still making stead, uh, headwinds. There was really no statistical change at all in NAEP across the entire nation. And that's something to point out is that with regards to NAEP, not a single state had an increase this past year. And Arizona was one of five, only five states that decreased. So no state showed any kind of gain or growth in NAEP in fourth grade. Next slide, please. And then Arizona also, um, as far as eighth, this shows where we are in relation to other states. Arizona, um, is below the national average now. Um, and then the next slide as well is, uh, eighth grade relative. Couple of things I wanted to point out here was looking back to, um, with regards to NAEP, that only one school, one state, excuse me, one state actually achieved pre-pandemic levels and that is the state of Louisiana. And then only Alabama is back to pre-pandemic levels in math. So again, just kind of putting it in the larger context of we are still seeing some of those impacts of the pandemic with especially our fourth graders, right? Those were the kiddos that were in kinder, first and second and third grade during that time of pandemic when we saw that interrupted, interrupted learning. So we know what works. It's staying the course and working through that. And states like Louisiana, and then of course, next slide, please, is Mississippi, which really shows, you know, that Mississippi miracle that everybody's trying to mimic. And again, showing the difference between our NAEP scores between Mississippi and Arizona. It doesn't look like it's a big difference, but it is. There are certain distinctions. Mississippi went full bore into early literacy initiatives. Well, Arizona chose to take a different approach, right? We chose to take it a little bit more of a smaller approach, doing it at scale. And so this slide just illustrates some of the differences. Mississippi's been at this for 10 years. With regards to the coaching, we've only been at it for 10, for three years. So you've got seven years of growth that Mississippi really is starting to see. They have a kindergarten entry exam. They also have a pilot preschool program, which again, kids just don't start learning to read in kinder, right? You start learning to read from the moment they start learning to talk and look at books, right? So having those preschool programs, they also, our coaches are on a small scale in just 29 coaches where they have the whole state worth of coaches. Mississippi also has limited the number of screeners. Our Move On When Reading, we have 10 screeners. So it's hard to compare apples to apples when we have so many different screeners and so many different curriculums. Where Mississippi did choose to kind of limit the number of curriculums that were vetted and limit the number of screeners that were used. I also included in the slide, um, a state comparison of different literacy initiatives. So you can really compare, um, states together to see where, where they're going. So I'm pleased with the progress that we're making, but again, we need to stay the course and continue, continue moving on. Next slide, please. So that gets us to our literacy initiative. So we have quite a few literacy initiatives that we work on in ADE and also Tiana's team specifically. Like I mentioned, our literacy coaching, we have 34 coaches and our screener data is showing fantastic results. We also have our dyslexia training, which we had 41 applications. Um, that's up from 20- That's up from 27 the previous year, so I'm super excited about that. Mauer is providing enhanced guidance to the field with their literacy plans, office hour, site visits and webinars. We're also, we've completed all the vetting of the core curriculums. And this spring, Tiana and her team will then vet all of the supplementary curriculums. Tiana's team also has gone out and done a literacy roadshow, getting to rural Arizona to make sure that everybody has that equal access where we've provided both in-person and virtual trainings for teachers based on the science of reading. And we've added a extra location this past year. Tiana's team also provides professional development, both online and person. They've provided over 995 hours of professional development to over 4,500 educators and 1,400 educators asynchronously. And a lot of that's through that Ames pathways to get them prepared, teachers prepared for the science of reading, foundation of science reading exam. I also wanted to point out our tutoring program, which focused on literacy and math. And for that, when we had those programs going on, the average was about a 22% gain for six weeks worth of high dosage tutoring. So again, we know what works. We just need to continue working on on that. And then lastly, our Adele, our Arizona Digital Educators Library is, has an AI lesson builder that is tied to the science of reading. And we also have videos out there and resources for teachers to really, if they're struck, how do I do something? You have this online resource for them to do. Next slide, please. We have many of online resources that ADE has to offer online on our website to help with the literacy endorsement, secondary reading and also Mauer as well. Next slide, please. And then last, I wanted to touch upon our recommendations. One, we want to continue and scale up our literacy coaches. I, we would personally love to see this coaching program go from grades K through five as opposed to stopping at grade three. We also support all of the K three early literacy subcommittee recommendations. And we also support the science of reading and using evidence-based curriculums in classrooms in grades six through 12 and requiring that. And with that, we're open for any questions and thank you for having us.
Thank you so much for that presentation. We're grateful that you all are here. Are there any questions, Member Meyerson?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I love the the data that you shared and I agree completely with your recommendations. Just a few questions. I think maybe one first as a comment to the point about the literacy coaches. I love the point of going up to Kinder, have it go through fifth grade. I think something that we're finding is a gap in phonics instruction for students in middle school, especially those who are coming new to us. And so this year, we implemented this like full-scale phonics intervention for middle school students because we found that it was a massive gap. And so just really appreciate the point of of that potentially accelerating up to to fifth grade. Two sort of specific questions. One, on the literacy curriculum piece, I think this is something that I've talked a lot about at the K three during the subcommittee time. I'm curious, or could you talk a little bit more about sort of where you are in the process? And mostly sort of the impact. I think, you know, all of these things that you you are doing are so wonderful. But if there is a gap in a science of reading aligned curriculum, there's sort of, you know, like that is the tier one instruction that has to be happening daily. And so I'm just sort of curious what what is happening in terms of schools that are still using curricula that is not aligned to science of reading? And maybe just walk me through kind of where we are on that.
Thank you, Vice President Haley, Superintendent Horn, Member Meyerson. That's a really good question. So what we have done is we've started to really, now that we have all those curriculums vetted and especially for the core tier one vetted curriculums. Tiana's team has taken that extra effort to really educate them based on the legislation that they have to be using these curriculums in order to get Mauer funding. So what we have put in place is LEAs have essentially three years to choose a curriculum, get it vetted, go through that public approval process, get approved by their boards and then purchase a curriculum, train their teachers on that curriculum and get it in place. So as Tiana's team each year meets with them, they are made aware first that, hey, you're choosing a a non-vetted curriculum. You have three years to get this curriculum. Let us know how we can assist you, what kind of questions you may have on it. Here's the list. And then each year, they are then again subsequently warned and alerted to the fact like, okay, this is year two. You now have, you know, just one more year until you need to get that curriculum. And then at that point in time, if they don't get the curriculum, then they potentially lose that Mauer funding.
Got it. And when is the end of that three years? Just so I'm, so when did, when did the year one start?
Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah. And if I could just add to that as well, there are several schools in Arizona who are using non-vetted core curriculum and have been using for years. So this particular school year, once we did a review of our list of core curriculum, we were very diligent when it came to sharing that with the field and making them aware that we were going to review all of the curricula on that list and that there potentially could be a change required. And so this year, with literacy plans, any school LEA that has a non-vetted core curriculum that they have submitted will receive a notice and an action plan. So their notice is just stating that they have until the third consecutive year, which is looking at, that would be the 27, 28 school year.
Okay, so this is sort of year one of those.
Right, right. They would then fill out their action plan and share with us what what are their next steps. Also, I'm working with vendors on the other end of that because vendors are also then hearing from schools as to, oh, we're not on this list. And what happened? And usually what happens is that the vendors will not respond to me when I'm asking for their research. But when they hear from those schools, then they come to me and they say, what can we do now? And so that's where it opens the communication with, here's what I need from you. Here's what you need to submit and here's the process. And then there's an ongoing conversation back and forth with that vendor. If we have any questions.
Got it. One, one just sort of thought and wondering is, is there, three years is obviously a long time to use a non-approved curriculum, let alone a non-science of reading. Is there any incentive that we could put in place for schools? Because again, it's February. This is still enough time to make a curriculum switch as you think about heading into next year. Could there be an idea of an incentive for schools that are willing to switch now going into the fall? I don't know what that would be from a cost perspective, but just an idea. Because again, as you all know, three years is really long. Just throw that idea out there. Second is, I, the amount of professional development you all are offering is incredible. One of the things I was wondering is, as you think about schools, especially that are making a curriculum change or that are using, how we can ensure that, ensure that professional development is aligned to implementation of the curriculum? Because I think also, as we know, it's one thing to sort of receive a boxed curricula. It's another thing to implement it well. And there's countless studies of teachers, very well-meaning teachers who worry about their students coming in, who are not able to do the coursework. And so then they're just adjusting or they're not using the curriculum that's provided, even though all of the data says to give students grade level work is actually the best thing for them. So just sort of curious, like how that professional development is aligned to implementation of curriculum, if at all?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, Member Meyerson, that's a good question. Given that we have so many curriculums that are possible to be vetted and each curriculum is chosen at a local level from a state point of view, there's really no way that we have to ensure the PD that for that particular curriculum is done effectively and properly. All we can do is just, here's the curriculum and, you know, offer the PD that Tiana and her team do, the conferences we go to, our online resources. You know, there are definitely things that we've looked into, like rating high-quality instructional materials. But again, that doesn't get to that implementation piece of it.
Well, I'd love to be a thought partner on that. I think that the implementation of curriculum is like maybe one of the biggest gaps in terms of, you know, again, people can have that science of reading line curriculum, but then to implement it well. And again, I'm even from experience, we have like teams of people that are just trying to ensure that we're implementing. We picked CKLA as an example. But I wonder, maybe one data point that would be interesting to get, could we see like, what's the highest used curriculum that is science of reading aligned from schools that are presenting, submitting to Mauer? And then from there, great, you know, 100 schools are using CKLA. I'm just making this up. And then we could target something that supports those schools with implementation. Because again, I think it's an excellent curriculum, but only when used well. Cool, okay, last question. The other question that I had was related to the the screeners that schools are using. If we look just at that, we'd see, you know, 55% plus of students that are supposedly proficient on or at benchmark, which obviously does not match our AASA results. Both at looking at, I think it's, you know, 42% or something in third grade and even lower when looking at low-income students. What is your sort of kind of current hypothesis? Is it the quality of the screener? Is it, which would be mine? Is it, you know, the the, this idea that it's self-reported? Just sort of curious, the discrepancy between screeners are saying we have 55% plus proficiency in third grade, our state testing results are clearly far lower. What is your sort of guess there?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, Member Meyerson. Again, got lots of great questions today. You know, it's a little bit of all of the above, right? So we've got the kids that are in fourth grade, where those students that really were hit hard during that intermittent learning that happened during the the pandemic. The reporting is self-reported. So there is no check because we don't have one particular screener that we could use. So we're comparing apples and oranges and pears.
Would that be your ideal scenario that we had?
In my ideal scenario, absolutely. It would be great if we had just one screener and maybe a, you know, handful of curriculums like Mississippi has done. So that way we can have a little bit more assistance to help those. You know, if we had five curriculums rather than, how many do we have?
We have 12.
12. You know, that makes a big difference. That would help.
12 screeners, sorry.
12 screeners.
Far more.
We've got something curriculums, right?
Speaking of screeners, right.
Yeah. But actually, I'd be curious if you could share the number of curricula, because that is a huge deal.
It is, it is. And if I could just kind of add to that with regards to universal screeners, it is difficult. And so what what happens is our team is looking at the data, beginning of year, middle of year and end of year. And if we notice that there is a discrepancy between the data that is being collected from one screener to the rest of the group, then we call that vendor, which is what is, which is what is occurring right now. So I am now in contact with that vendor and bringing that to their attention. And it could go back to what you mentioned before was, were those teachers trained properly in how to give that screener? Were there pieces that were missing that did not get tested for each student? And so that's important to keep in mind as well when you're looking at data coming from different, different vendors, different screeners. I agree that implementation is the key right now. We're really focusing in on the what is science of reading and structured literacy? And why is that important, which is needed, right? But the next step is in now, how do you apply that in everyday classroom instruction? And how is that, most importantly, supported by the systems and the administration at the school and the district level?
Well, thank you. Those were my questions. I think I had a couple of things that I'd love to get back from you all, just in terms of some support and questions. But again, just grateful for the work. It couldn't be more important. So thank you.
Any other questions from members of the board? No? I just would like to echo so many of the points that Member Meyerson made just serving on the K through three literacy subcommittee. One, it's really great to see that those that are going through the training are doing well on the foundations of reading exam. I think that's a good proof of concept and hopefully we'll start to see results of that. But many thanks to you all at the, in the Mauer team for doing all that you are. This is an issue of great importance for members of the board. So thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll take a 13-minute break till 11:15. And with that, we'll take a, uh, thirteen minute break till eleven fifteen. Hi, can our members online, uh, show their cameras for just a little bit, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cruz. I always wanted to make sure we had quorum before we moved on.
Okay, so we have quorum and I assume Dr. Clay will be joining us momentarily. And then did we lose member Katniss?
Uh, we did, um, President Haley, but we are, we're still, quorum is six members. So we're still, still okay.
Awesome. Great. Wonderful. Okay, so we are now moving on. Thanks for taking a break, everyone. Hopefully you stretch your legs. Um, we are now moving on to item five D. And this is again, an informational only presentation. Executive Director Ross.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Um, has, has been the case for a little over a year at this point. Um, the board is working with the department on a revision and potential eventual adoption of the Arizona State Plan for Perkins Five, the funding that, uh, covers CTE. We have had bimonthly updates. Uh, today will be our last update before the board will be presented with a plan for a vote at the April Board Meeting. Uh, and with us today is Trevor Stokes and Colette Chapman from the Arizona Department of Education.
Good morning, President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. As always, an honor uh, to be with you and provide you with an update. Uh, and I will, in light of that, uh, sense of, of being honored, uh, at great risk to my personal reputation, uh, make sure that I conclude my presentation on time today. So I do appreciate, uh, this opportunity and I have some slides to share with you. I want to recap, uh, very quickly the, the engagement that we have done since my last update to this body. Because the theme, the approach to this project has been to listen with an authentic sense of humility to everything that we have garnered from members of the board, as well as from the stakeholders you encouraged us, uh, to, uh, engage. And so since that last, uh, update, uh, before which we had already engaged with several members of the board in direct conversations, uh, we have engaged with a, a spectrum of other stakeholders. And all of the changes that I'm going to share today are the result of direct inputs we have collected from, uh, those various stakeholders. So in conversing with the board, uh, I'm not, uh, exaggerating when I say it was really illuminating to hear the perspectives of individuals. We had members of the board who really wanted to understand the impact of this plan on students with disabilities. We wanted some who wanted to understand the impact on schools and districts and, and practitioners in local areas, uh, and different geographies of the state. So we had, uh, this spectrum of perspectives, each of which had, uh, individual priorities, but all of which were considered uh, and made their way in one form or another into, uh, this overview slide. So, uh, and another one, sorry. So the first thing I wanted to address was state determined performance levels. There are six secondary level, uh, 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 standards that we addressed. There are three post-secondary standards. And I wanted to go back into the methodology of this. The Federal Department of Education requires a certain level of increase in each of these SDLPs. So based on your performance over the last couple of years, there is a federal minimum that we have to set within each of these performance indicators. So in this case, the graduation rate, based on what has happened the last two years across the state, the minimum that we have to establish as the state determined performance level is ninety-six point two nine percent. Based on that, we gained, we proposed very close to that ninety-six point three four with a three-year progress toward a goal of ninety-six point four seven percent. Slide. Visually, this is what it looks like. And, and I'm not going to go into all of these very busy slides in detail, but I wanted to show you the methodology behind this. Those black columns on the left of the graphic are actual historical data. Right? So the red in the middle is the federal minimum. Those gray columns that you see are what we have proposed as the SDLP for this indicator. The green is ninety percent of that proposed indicator because that is the threshold that a district must meet in order not to be faced with a, a need for improvement and an improvement plan. Right? So you can see that in this case, with this graduation rate, that ninety percent threshold is well below the state's, uh, historical performance over recent years. We heard from, uh, one board member in particular, concerns about inputs from that, uh, area of the state in how these thresholds and these performance minimums would impact those schools compared to how they would impact schools in general or schools in more urban settings of the state. So we engaged directly, uh, with, uh, LEA and district administrators, uh, and supervisors in order to get their feedback on these SDLP. In addition to direct outreach to stakeholders and experts on the topic, we convened three dedicated summits of stakeholders in which we presented each of these SDLP and in which we solicited their input and asked what kind of impact this would have on them in their districts or in their schools as they sought to meet these benchmarks. Slide. The other SDLPs that we have to establish to us, one is reading proficiency. As you'll see, just the same way that I addressed graduation rate, federal minimum based on our previous performance is fifty-three point five four. Our objective is over the course of this three-year project to increase that to forty-four point eight two. Slide. You'll see again that those ninety percent thresholds, uh, that schools are going to be required to meet are attainable while the objectives that we set have an aspirational element to them. Because again, that is one of the inputs that we collected from members of this body, which said they wanted to see aspiration. They wanted to see innovation. They wanted to see how we were going to work through this plan to improve the educational experience of CTE students in Arizona. Slide. After reading, we also address science proficiency, which you'll see the federal minimum there at twenty-three point one six percent. And following that pattern, our first year standard is proposed slightly above that with a targeted increase over that three-year period. Slide. And I, as I promised, I'm not going to, uh, go into detail on each of these graphic presentations. But my objective here is to share with the board that we heard what you said about wanting to see innovation and aspiration in our approach to this work. So that is an increase, uh, in each of these SDLP that we are going to target in the coming program years. Slide. We also addressed mathematics proficiency, which has been addressed, uh, a couple of times already today. My firm actually is, is a mathematics focused firm. So I really enjoyed hearing us being able to kind of nerd out on mathematics content earlier today. Really was enjoyable. But our federal minimum was set at thirty, thirty-seven point five, and you see our proposed standards. Slide. Again, the ninety percent threshold being set below historical performance in recent years. Slide. The other, uh, couple ones that I'll go through quickly, placement rate, uh, seventy-two point three nine is our minimum. Uh, you will see our, uh, proposed, uh, marks slide, which is based on the relatively flat performance that we have seen, uh, in those recent program years. Our most recent year, that twenty-three, twenty-four, actually saw, uh, an increase, uh, that we were happy to see, but that does, uh, it, that is possibly an outlier in that trend. Slide. Non-traditional enrollment, uh, and this is something I'll address slightly as, as I go forward into the innovation part of this plan. You'll see the federal minimum and our proposed increase in that performance threshold. Slide. Uh, again, following that same pattern. And then slide. We also have, uh, one that was particularly concerning to a lot of districts. We are required by federal law, based on what we've done in the last two years, to set a minimum performance level of thirty-nine point two three percent. The definition of this indicator is changing and our expectation is that there will be a definition uh, from the US Department of Education, uh, in next year that will define, create a standard definition for this metric that establishes the denominator as the number of CTE concentrators who graduated high school and the numerator as those graduating having earned an industry-recognized credential. So we are matching that DOE guidance, uh, now in the interest of not having to rewrite or at least create an addendum for the Perkins Plan next year. Right? Slide. And another slide. There are, uh, the technical skills assessment has been mentioned before, our current minimum, uh, right at two-thirds, sixty-seven point six three percent. We do have a significant, uh, aspirational goal of moving that mark to seventy-four percent, uh, over the course of three years. So that, uh, is again, following that historical trend, uh, and trying and accounting on what is working, continuing to work. One of the inputs we got from members of this board was to, to show the level of data analysis that went into determining each of these elements of this plan. Slide. Post-secondary, uh, elements, uh, are also, uh, subject to a state determined minimum performance level. In this case, for post-secondary retention and placement, they have a federal minimum that you see there with a, uh, very modest increase over a three-year period. And then again, because I'm, in spite of my temptation, I'm not going to go into detail on all of the data on these credentials, certificates and degrees. Again, federal minimum with our aspirations over a three-year period. Uh, and you can see that graphically. And then the last one, uh, the post-secondary non-traditional enrollment, uh, is, this is one that has a, uh, an element in the historical data that is, uh, that really is great, wouldn't change it. But we have one provider who is really, really good at this. And it has caused our historical performance to be very high, which makes it somewhat difficult for some other providers to match this. But we do have a federal minimum that we are required to establish based on that, uh, overall average performance across the state. Slide. So we also addressed this one, post-secondary funding split. So we convened, uh, or engaged with a number of stakeholders uh, at the behest of members of this board, uh, during the interviews we, we conducted. We engaged with AC4, the Arizona Community Colleges Coordinating Council. Uh, we had direct conversations as well as one dedicated summit in which we convened leaders from these systems specifically to discuss this, uh, this particular issue. convened leaders from these systems specifically to discuss this, this particular issue. In this case, the thing that really stood out during that conversation, which included representatives from every, across the state, from Maricopa County to Northland Pioneer, a lot of different stakeholders who said twice in the meeting that while they wanted to see an increase in this, that it's not about the money. That was their words, twice. What they pointed out, and the point they made, was that the issue is about collaboration and that nexus of service delivery at secondary and post-secondary levels across the state. And they told stories that made me, as someone who focuses on that industry-education intersection, really squirm in my seat. College representative going to a local employer to talk about a particular program, only to be told, well, somebody from the high school was here two weeks ago, talking about how they just developed the same program. How's that different from what you're doing, right? Entirely embarrassing posture for us to have to take as an educational system. And these representatives of the community college system told us multiple stories along those lines, and you'll see our strategic response to that here in just a minute. The data analysis piece of this as well, went into, into this issue, again, taking the behest of members of this board to show the data analysis that led to these conclusions. Slide. You'll see the Perkins allocation by state. We found states that have a similar allocation to ours and how they handle the distribution of those. The share of the total allocation going to each of the post-secondary institutions puts us roughly similar, roughly identical to Washington, trailing Wisconsin, South Carolina, Indiana, larger than New Jersey and Tennessee. So here are some things we have added to the plan. Three strategic initiatives in particular have been included as part of this plan. This is in direct response to the inputs we got from stakeholders. What you asked us to do, we have responded to. These three initiatives, I won't read this busy slide to you, but I want to tell you why we did these. You told us that you wanted to see innovation and aspiration. So the department has committed to a strategic planning initiative, state-level, updated new CTE plan for the state, which already has a few identified streams of work, including students with disabilities and subgroups, and providing technical support for districts in meeting these ever-rising state-determined performance levels. We have also, in response to what the community college representatives told us, created the Education Alliance Council. This is a standing platform, an initiative convened and hosted by the department, which will bring secondary and post-secondary level stakeholders together in order to optimize that intersection between secondary and post-secondary level CTE program delivery. And third, and this one actually kicks off day after tomorrow, a new element within the CTE unit has been created. It's called the Community Engagement Team. This team has a geographic focus with a dedicated resource targeted to each area of the state to connect with employers, find work-based learning opportunities, and provide technical assistance to districts in reaching out to and connecting with employers and community partners. We looked at that stream of work in particular, because this is just one example of the data analysis that went into this. Students with a disability in Arizona exceed the share of the enrollment in certain programs of study more than in others. Across the state, you're looking at 11, sorry, my own timer, you're looking at 11.21%. However, in some of our highest-paying programs in terms of career outcomes, our share of students with disabilities lags that 11% number. I'll go through the rest of these, and I do appreciate your time. I appreciate the opportunity to be responsive to what we were told, and the elements of the strategic elements, rather, of this plan are available. You've been provided with those, and I hope that you will see the innovative and aspirational approach that the department has committed to take in terms of developing and implementing this plan. And with that, I'm only 30 seconds over. I'll call that a win.
That's, that's good. You covered a lot of content today, so thank you so much. Do we have questions from members of the board? Dr. Court?
Thanks so much, Trevor. You know, as the plan has been brought before this board twice and rejected twice, and we've talked about that funding split. Post-secondary serve, I believe, 47% of all CTE students in the state. Does that resonate with you?
It's 47 or 46, something like that.
Okay, with 18% of the funds, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Are you aware of another program that has such a disparity that isn't based on student FTE, but is so out of whack?
Do you mean, is there a program in Arizona, or do you mean comparing it to other states?
No, in the state of Arizona, we tend to fund per pupil, per something. Why would you find that funding stream in the norm?
The way that Perkins funding is allocated requires us to create a split, of course, between secondary and post-secondary level funding recipients. The, the funding formula is not based on the number of students served.
I guess I'm asking, why not? Are you aware of another program in the state that's not based on the number of students served?
I am nothing, not, I don't have one coming to mind, but I hear it behind me.
So it's fair to say this is wildly out of the norm, right? We can't, a bunch of smart folks in the room, no one can think of a program that is not in any way based on student FTE.
Not that I can think of here. If you're talking about comparing it to other states, I'm not aware of another state that bases it on.
Okay, fair.
Enrollment.
And our funding split puts post-secondary in the bottom five nationally.
In terms of total share?
Percentage, yeah, okay. And we're looking status quo. What's, what's presented will be a status quo in terms of that funding split.
Correct.
Okay. I think we need, again, we've, we presented a status quo, it's been rejected twice. I think we need to think about this a different way. And I'll make one more whack at the pignon, and we'll, we'll, we'll vote on it in April, right? But I'll make one more. There's got to be a different way of looking at things. And I know Yuma, because, because I sit in Yuma County. We're about to, to expand our Welton Advanced Manufacturing Center. We'll have the governor down on Thursday. We'll put shovels in the ground. It'll be a great thing. One-third of the students in, in that center will bear our high school partners. We don't want every high school in Yuma and La Paz County to have to buy a piece of equipment, when the local community college can serve as the regional hub for CTE and big builder, big, bigger, better, more resilient, more industry-specific than having to expect that replicated, especially in rural districts. And I'm just incredibly frustrated that I keep banging the drum, and I keep getting a document presented to this board. At one point, it died for lack of a second. And we're just saying, we're listening to you, but here's the same thing, status quo. At some point, I may be a lone wolf, you know, barking in the, barking in the woods, but I will vote against this plan in April, and I would encourage my colleagues to do the same until we're listened to. I do appreciate you, though. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from members of the board?
Dr. Clay? Thank you. Thank you. My question is this right here. Mine has to do with the state determined performance levels. I see that the federal minimum, first, before I, we do that, give me the definition of an industry-recognized credential. So just to make sure we're on the same page.
Sure. Industry-recognized credential is a, a personal and portable achievement based on demonstration of skills or knowledge. So it can be a certificate of something like a, you know, provided by a vendor, Microsoft or something, up to a college degree, something that is recognized by employers in terms of creating a career opportunity.
Okay, so that means that the smaller, especially the rural schools, will have to put the bill on some of these credentials so that they don't fall below the proposed third-year minimum, which is 48.65, where the federal minimum is 39.23. Okay, why, why, why is it, why, why are we, is that proposed third-year minimal the federal minimal, or is that a minimal that you're proposing?
So the third-year minimum will be, it's set by the department, right at this point. Obviously, when we wrote the new plan in 2029, then our, that new performance minimum will be based on the historical performance that's now that proposed level.
Convince me. So the federal minimum is 39.23, right? Okay. And you're, you're going still above the federal minimum, which is going to hurt our rural schools, unless somebody, unless I'm seeing something that somebody else does not see. If I want to go and, and into any program, and I'm in the rural school, and I don't want to continue on, then the best thing for me to do is not to go into the program at all. Because if I go into the program, I don't want to take any, I don't, I don't want to do any type of industry credential, which costs money, right? Then that's going to hurt the school, right? So the, for me, the, for students to want to explore and dabble, which is what career tech, one of the reasons we have career technology education, to find out what our natural attributes are. Now you, it looks like this is put in stone that if I, I can't dabble, I can't see if, because if I see if, then I'm going to mess up my school. Am I right or wrong? I'm just, I'm, 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 I need clarity on this, because I know students who don't know what they want, but they want to go into one of the CTE programs. All right? And, and this is not jiving with the spirit of the law of CTE. If, if, and these, these numbers, if we say that you have a federal minimum, okay? Okay, that's something dictated to us, but why are we going way above it?
So let me back up first on the definition there. So a student who enrolled in a CTE class, then, like you said, explored, because I'm a massive champion of career exploration in general, if that student decided this is not for me and dropped out, that student would not be a concentrator, and so wouldn't be counted in that denominator on graduation?
What if the student didn't want to drop out, but I'm still, what if the student wanted to stay through because they want to, let's talk about, you know, maybe auto or something like that. They just liked it, but that's not, that's not something that they wanted to do. Okay, they liked it. And so, again, we're stifling initiative to ours, to our CTE students and CT programs growing, because teachers are going to say, hey, if you're not going to do this, just don't do it, because you're going to mess with our, you're, you're going to mess, you know, with our data, and we don't want that. Could that happen? Could that be a consequence of doing something like this?
In a scenario in which the, the, the value to the student was not the priority compared to the, the impact on the school, then that, that would be a possibility, right? The, the minimum that was set or proposed, in this case, for that particular SDLP, is based on the trend that we've seen of increasing numbers of students who earned that IRC on graduation after becoming a CTE concentrator. So if the trend, the historical trend, holds true even to the point of increasing at half the rate that it has in recent years, then schools would well surpass that performance level. So the, the cost of an IRC is absolutely an issue. And for a school's program to identify and get approved, an IRC that they can afford does require some, does require some work in some cases. It really does. I've been there. I'm helping the state of Massachusetts right now, every school identify IRCs for each of their programs, and the issue of the cost of sitting down to take that assessment for a, you know, a, a Microsoft, or a SQL database certification, or an AWS certification, or something, it can be prohibitively expensive for some districts, and can be an issue more than for others. But those schools do have the opportunity to find other IRCs that they hopefully can afford better.
Okay, thank you. My, my last comment is that I believe that with this, it's stifling, stifling the initiative to students who may want to dabble. I may want to go into Microsoft just to learn a lot about it, but I might not want to take the test. Okay, so I don't agree with this. I am not convinced. All right? I don't want to do anything that's going to stop my students from having motivation, perfect, purpose and direction on what they may want to do when they, when they get older. Right? Again, I understand the 39.23, okay? Why not keep it at 39? Why not keep it like the other ones you did? Keep it at what the federal minimum is, because this looks that this, it just doesn't look right to me. It looks like somebody's trying to make some money, okay, with these, with these certifications, especially when I go, I see 39, and then I see 48. Okay, it just doesn't look right. All right, so that is my, I, I don't agree with this, and I would definitely not vote on this. Okay.
So Dr. Clay, can I ask, can I ask you to clarify just for me one thing? So on this, are you saying that your preference would be that it be the federally required minimum on each of the program years covered by the plan?
I would like this to follow what you've been following with all the other ones. Okay, so if the feds said 39.23, why not follow the same thing you've been doing with the other ones?
Okay.
But you understand what I'm saying? Because it looks like somebody's trying to make some money here.
Correct.
As I said, and, and that's, why am I saying this? Because this is what's coming to me from the field. All right? It, it looks like it, it's perceived, and we don't want that. So that's why, at this point, I don't agree with this.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions from members of the board? I would, if not, I have just a few questions. I appreciate the presentation, Mr. Stokes. I, I would like to understand this new council, and I, I'm not really interested in more meetings and more people talking. If some of the issue is execution, implementation, and helping our schools reach a higher standard so that they are prepared with career-connected learning, ready to work, whether that's skills and opportunities to go on to post-secondary, or individuals go directly into the marketplace with tangible credentials. I appreciate the council, but I'd like to know a little bit more of what is envisioned there, and would like to make sure it's just not another meeting. So would you mind explaining a little bit more of that?
And thank you for the, thank you for that question and that, that thought, because I completely agree with the, the concept there, right? And as does the leadership of the department that, that came up with, with this idea. This is not designed to be a strategic, a recurring strategic meeting, where they sit down and, and, you know, try to discuss various issues. The initial outputs, as this is envisioned, is about information sharing, because that is what the community college representatives told us was their big issue, right? They said that this is, you know, they said, it might be an exact quote, "This is not about the money. This is about how we work together," right? And envision, that level of information sharing is one of the initial outputs identified. outputs identified for doing this. Finding a way to communicate between secondary and post-secondary level stakeholders in such a way that they can collaborate, in such a way that they can implement effectively and not be tripping over each other, duplicating services. Uh, and, you know, otherwise bringing inefficiency to the experience. So information sharing is the priority, strategic collaboration opportunities are the second. Right? So on a local level, if a second, post-secondary level provider uh, is aware of what's going on at the secondary level, one of the examples brought up to us was a welding program being developed at the college. Uh, and the question being if that's being developed entirely separately and in an entirely separate universe at the high school level, that's an absolutely missed opportunity. Right? So sharing of information as well as identifying those opportunities uh, to collaborate are the, the initial outputs envisioned for this. Other outputs would be identified during the actual work of this, the, with the overriding objective being to optimize the delivery of services between secondary and post-secondary level providers.
So just, um, in a simplified version would be like in the case of Yuma, like Arizona Western College. I know this from, because we, we got to spend some time down there in August of twenty twenty three. Is we had key stakeholders, not only from the C Teds, but you also had the high schools have a very distinct collaborative relationship with A W C. So the idea that they have a welding program. So the idea is that students that wanted to get certified in welding, they would go to, is it the Welton campus? They'd go to Welton instead of having to build up a whole welding program within, or if they want to do auto body, they would go to the main A W C campus rather than let's stand up a, a course in part of one of our high school buildings. Is that the vision? Sort of the idea is like, let's get everyone in, say, Yuma and La Paz counties that are talking uh, so that everyone knows what everybody else is doing, or is it we're going to send out some memos and hopefully individuals that get it are going to like pick up the phone and, or send an email?
Uh, definitely closer to the former, right? The, the, the scenario you, you gave is perfect, right? For, for the reasoning behind this initiative. Because the, um, you know, for that program to be offered uh, in fragments at various high school campuses is not efficient. For it to be offered in a centralized location that's not accessible to every student would hypothetically would also be inefficient. However, one of the very first conversations we had with a member of the board, the comment was made, we need to find a different way to do this. Right? And that's why instead of just shifting dollars without strategic changes, this initiative was envisioned to provide that strategic element to it so that we are not just moving money around, but we're also reimagining how we deliver services, how we move secondary level students into post-secondary programs of study uh, and other opportunities to collaborate across that spectrum of education.
And just, thank you. Um, I think my one point on if there's an increase in collaboration, particularly if you go through a twenty twenty five strategic plan and really figure out what does the future of workforce preparation look like for our students. My hope is, just as you all have had many conversations with the C four, with C Teds, with educators, with county superintendents and super attendants, I would really urge you to continue to have that conversation. I would urge you all to encourage to have that conversation with uh, Arizona Commerce Authority. They are in the business of recruiting business and industry, and consistently industry is coming to us and say, that's great. We're excited to come, but we do not have individuals with the skills to fill the jobs
Right.
that are literally on the cusp. Another conference question that I would have is just with the Department's Arizona Education Economic Commission. Again, like super very, I was thrilled when superintendent announced that last year, or maybe it was two years ago. My time, I've lost all sense of time. Is I would really ensure that you have this C, the C four, our community colleges at the table. Increasingly, they are serving as that intermediary that comes in and out to provide those skills training that are needed for individuals that I just think it's really important. I don't believe they're at that table. And I would urge, uh, the department to be part of that conversation. Um, in part because whether it's thinking different parts of the report, there was highlights of how are you going to work with Weowa? And we don't have a strategic relationship with Weo and how it, Weo is implemented. But as that strategic plan for Perkins is moving, I would urge again, like, let's bring all the stakeholders to tab, to the table so that we can create a coordinated plan. So it's not just K twelve, it's not just post-secondary, it's not just adult learners, but that we have a comprehensive view of where we want our dynamic state to go. So, um, I'll leave that with my comments. Does anybody else have any comments? Dr. Core.
I just want to follow up on what you just said. I'm, I'm very respectfully dubious that a state group meeting in Phoenix will increase, increase collaboration between Mojave Community College and Kingman School District or Winslow. Uh, we don't need more state control coming out of Phoenix. Albeit well meaning. So I'm dubious about the ultimate effectiveness of that group here you're looking to put together.
Well, Mr. Stokes, thanks so much for your time today. We appreciate it, and we appreciate the hard work that you and the A D team are doing to present a plan to us.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. With that, I think we go on to item five E. This is to close rulemaking procedures for AAC R seven two six one five endorsement, which are endorsements. So Deputy Director DePlante, you are on deck.
Thank you, President Haley, Superintendent, and members of the board. Just as a reminder about this item, a little bit of background, along with department staff, state board staff, the Certification Advisory Committee worked all through the summer and the fall to do kind of a comprehensive review of endorsement rules. Making technical cleanup changes, some language changes, aligning it to science of reading, as well as updating some languages on, on foreign languages and the like. The recommendation today, so, I mean, back up, December, you opened the rule. We had a public hearing, uh, which no comments were received. We gave you an update at the January board meeting. And here we are with our recommendation to close and adopt the rule. Um, but also some additional language about grandfathering for two years. Um, very minor changes in a couple of requirements, but, um, we don't believe that's going to impact anybody, but just in case the language includes a two-year kind of grandfathering window to allow the department to qualify individuals under either set of rules, the old or the new. With that, staff stands ready to answer questions.
Do we have any questions from members of the board? Seeing that there are none, do I have a motion that the State Board of Education adopt the draft of proposed rules, close rulemaking procedures for AAC R seven two six one five, and direct the department to allow educators who apply for a reading specialist, elementary world language, or cooperative education endorsement on or before February twenty twenty, or February twenty four, twenty twenty six, to qualify for the endorsement by meeting all of the current requirements or all of the new requirements?
I move approval as presented.
So Dr. Core, and then Member Meyerson, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing that there are none, the ayes have it. Okay, we're all now moving to item five F. This is presentation and discussion regarding legislative affairs. We will now hear from Policy Director Yanis.
Hi. Good afternoon, President Haley, members of the board. Um, I'm going to provide a brief legislative update now that we are in the end of February. Uh, last Friday was the last week in both originating chambers to hear committee bills. So we are looking at, um, in the materials, the education committee bills that have moved through to this point. And that should be a large bulk of what we will be seeing throughout the rest of the session. Just to, to highlight a few things that have gone on since January. The Senate Education Committee, as far as the board's focus, has largely been on the educator discipline space. There has been a proposed expansion of our educator discipline IU unit, um, which would cover for paraprofessionals and teacher aides. It's S B twelve ninety two. Um, and then over on the House end of things, um, we've been seeing a lot more legislation around school financial compliance, some stuff around the USFR governing boards and receivership, kind of in response to the action that was taken by the board in January for Isaac's Tool District. Um, and then in the most recent week, uh, because it was the last week to hear bills in their originating chambers and in their committees that they were assigned. There was movement on pushing out Prop one, two, three legislation um, to restart kind of the negotiations around that. To see if, if there's an appetite to, to, to pull that away from the general fund so that there won't need to be a backfill for the session. That it's very early on, so I probably won't discuss a ton of the details of the contents that are currently in that legislation. Because it seemed that there was sort of a lot of discussions that were going to be kind of parsed out over the next couple of months, potentially. And then also, we saw a bill introduced for the aggregated expenditure limit as well for the, for the next fiscal year. Um, and that would provide schools with the safety and assurance that they were able to, to, you know, count their budget for this upcoming fiscal year without having to kind of wait on wait on the, the, the March date that they had been for prior years. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you so much, Deputy Director Yanis, or I just promoted you. Policy Director Yanis. Do we have any questions from members of the board on the legislative update?
Super quick. The aggregate limitation, is that just a one-year reprieve, or is that something more systemic?
It's, it's not a systemic. It's, it's a, it's a one-year lift.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions from members of the board? Awesome. Okay. Thank you so much. We really appreciate your update.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now moving on to item six. This is the item six, which is a call to the public. This is a time for the public to comment on today's consent portion of the enforcement actions. Executive Director Ross, do we have any members who have requested to speak?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, we do not have any requests for this call to the public.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. So we will now move on to item seven. The consent agenda for enforcement actions will be taken in a single motion. Is there an item or items for the consent agenda for enforcement actions that a board member would like to pull and discuss? All right, seeing that there are none, do I have a motion to approve items seven A one through seven A twelve, seven B one, seven C one, seven D one, seven E one, and seven E two?
I move approval as presented.
Dr. Core makes a motion. Do I have a second? Uh, Member Meyerson makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, moving on to item eight, we'll, this is again a call to the public. This is a time for the public to comment on items on the general session portion of the enforcement actions. All speakers will be limited to two minutes. Executive Director Ross, do we have any requests to speak?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, up first, we have Tyler Royal, followed, followed by Taylor Sosemski. Is Tyler with us? Oh, perfect.
Good afternoon. How you doing? Um, I'm coming to speak about my dad and this, you know, accusations about what he did at Maricopa High School. Uh, my dad is a very, very good human being, human being. He did none of what, you know, accused of. My dad is from Chicago, you know, he does work with the kids, work with the community, work with the church since he was a kid, youth pastor back in Chicago. Coached me since I was, you know, about fourth grade, fifth grade, just got done coaching me when I was a junior in high school. Nothing he did was, he did nothing he was accused of. I believe he deserves a second chance. He still has a very, very good connection with the kids. He's, uh, that you said he did that against. I just don't see that wide out, he was accused of anything like that. That's not his character, or that's nothing he would even think about doing. Like I said, I believe he deserves a second chance at, you know, his job, at his credibility. The article that was published about him was not true. Back in the city of Maricopa, um, I actually got the article sent to me um, from the kids in Chicago, which is very, very ridiculous. I just don't agree with, you know, the things that have been said about him. You know, across Arizona, back from Chicago, they clearly called me and asked me, is the article true? Told him no multiple times. It's nothing he would do, you know? That's all I got to say, honestly. Thank you guys so much for listening to me.
Thank you. President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, up next, we have Taylor Sosemski.
Good afternoon. My name is Taylor Sosemski, attorney on behalf of Jay Casario, who is agenda item ninety two. I am here today to ask the board to approve Mr. Casario's settlement agreement. I don't have any additional comments at this time, but I am available to answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, that concludes this call to the public.
Thank you so much, Executive Director Ross. We'll now move to item nine. Is there an item or items from the consent agenda that a board member would like to pool and discuss? Seeing that there are not, there are none, do I have a motion to approve items nine A one through nine A five and B one through nine B fourteen?
I move approval as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Dr. Hagerman makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing that the ayes have it, the motion carries. So with that, we'll now move to item ten. Executive Director Ross.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Uh, just a reminder that our next board meeting is Monday, March twenty fourth. And that's, that's it. Thank you for a productive meeting.
Awesome. We'll call this meeting adjourned at twelve eleven P M.
Thank you.